Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Londonderry Town Council meeting for February 11th, 2013. This evening, we would like to ask the Boy Scouts to come up and lead the Pledge of Allegiance for us if you would be so kind. Are one of you in command, or should I just point to somebody? He's your leader. It's all yours, sir. The floor is yours.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing for a moment of silence. I apologize, I might be a little long-winded this evening. We had one of our library trustees, I went to his funeral mass today, John Belenquend, he passed away last week. Also, we just received news this afternoon that a gentleman who's done a lot of work here in town, and served as a town moderator, served on numerous boards, he was the school moderator, Attorney John Michaels passed away this afternoon. So if we could just please have a moment of silence. Let's open our agenda this evening with public comment. The first piece of public comment I have for this evening is the Londonderry Housing and Redevelopment presentation of Pettingill Road development opportunities. Good evening, sir. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, sir?
Paul Hugue, 519, 1112.
Thank you, sir.
We really don't intend to, or I didn't intend to, give you the details, so to speak, of the report, in which case we need no goes, I'm sure. But we thought we would at least give you a quick summary of what our plan was for, and then maybe seek a little direction from you.
That'd be great. Thank you, Paul.
But as I think you all know, the Londonderry Housing and Redevelopment Authority was put together back in 1968. I was not an original member, maybe I was around back then. And the plan was simply for us to take underutilized industrially-sown or commercially-sown properties and make them productive for the town. So that's essentially what we've been doing over the years with a specific project area of the airport industrial park. So naturally, the Pettingill Road project is one that we have some interest in, given that it's right in the midst of our project area, and that reportedly, anyway, if completed, it would give access to close to 1,000 acres of industrially-sown land. So, you know, we heard different opinions from different people over the course of a few years about the project. Interestingly, the opinions were all different, and interestingly, they all sounded pretty good. But I suspect they couldn't all be right. So we thought that maybe it would be helpful to the town if we could get a qualified resource to perform an unbiased, very objective analysis of this Pettingill Road project. And we went out and signed a few bids, and we were fortunate to engage ADR. Russ is good at making an entrance, he got here with about a minute to go. But the idea was that we would get a report that might help the town to assess the pros and cons of the project, to maybe get some facts and data about the likely means of funding the project, and what the impacts would be for that, and what the overall impact of the project would be on the town if it was completed, or if it wasn't completed. And Russ is going to give you maybe a very short synopsis. What you have in front of you is a one-page synopsis of the report, and there's a slide behind you that bullet points his ultimate findings. And then maybe at the end of his discussion with you, which we don't anticipate would take very long, if you have some advice for us as to how we might make this information more public. You know, we thought, gee, maybe we should, because the report is pretty, you know, pretty thick. We thought maybe we publish it online and give people access to it if they like it. But if you have some thoughts around that, we'd certainly appreciate it. So with that, I'll pass it on to Russ.
Thank you, Paul.
Hi, Russ. Full name, please, for the record.
Yes, my name is Russell Tebow. I am the president of Applied Economic Research, economic and real estate consultant firm based in Laconia, which I founded about 40 years ago.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Do you have all that more, Al? Thank you, sir. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I'm pleased to report briefly to you tonight on the findings of the study. As Paul mentioned, there's a more extensive report available, which we made available to the town staff. Fundamentally, the conclusions are that Pettingill Road is the most attractive business park development opportunity in New Hampshire. There's essentially no competition for its large flat site serviced by sewer and water elsewhere in the state. I have served as a consultant to the Pease Trade Port and to the Centerra Park in Hanover, Lebanon, which are somewhat comparable business park settings, so I say that with some background. It's significant enough to have a major positive influence on the town's tax and employment base, and could improve town-wide accessibility to the airport and turnpike. It offers nearly 1,000 acres of prime business development land. I point out that it doesn't have to be assembled, there are basically two development entities that own the land. It's really a unique opportunity, the land is flat, readily developable, has sewer and water serviced nearby. By my calculations, based on the employment density at other parks in the state, you're looking at the possibility of 10,000 to 15,000 jobs on build-out. It can generate 200 to 300 million in new assessed value, generating 6.5 to 7.5 million in net annual property taxes after allowing for the cost of servicing the users in the park, police, fire, roads, et cetera. You have a variety of funding options available, the Economic Development Administration, tax increment financing, general obligation bonds, public-private partnerships, and impact fees could all be utilized to offset some or all of the town costs. The town could invest in the completion of Pettingill Road in advance of a major end-user committing to the area, and reach breakeven in about five to eight years in a normal market environment. I looked at the absorption pace that you've experienced in the town, I've looked at the absorption pace experienced at the Pease Trade Port and at Centerra, and this conclusion is based on the likely absorption pace, which I think if anything, may be set a little bit conservatively, I'd rather be low than high in that estimate. So you're looking at about, if you did, what this is saying is if you built the road and the infrastructure, spent around $12.5 million on those items, you could look to a breakeven in about six to eight years if you don't have a big user on the front end. If you do have a big user of about 500,000 square feet, and that's not out of the question for this park, then you'd be breakeven in the first year. As soon as you have 500,000 square feet of space built, you'll be breakeven in terms of meeting the debt service requirements of the $12.5 million local cost. The finances are more favorable if an end-user is committed, and overall, my conclusion is there's no more attractive tax-generating investment Londonderry can make than the Pettingill Road infrastructure. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. We did look quite, I think in quite detail, at the marketability of the land based on the absorption of other space. I did, built a financial model that is quite detailed, and tested the model under different scenarios, and I think that, as I've expressed it here, this is an appropriate synopsis of my research. I'd be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, if that's appropriate.
Thank you, sir. I'll be going to the public first, I'll go to the council. Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Sure. You said you'd breakeven in five to eight years, that's with no major development?
Yes. That's absorbing about 150,000 square feet of space a year, which is doable, in my opinion. Londonderry did 1.5 million square feet of new commercial and industrial space between, I think it was 2002 and 2007. So it's, yes.
And what kind of financing is being used to come up with?
General obligation bonds.
Okay. And once it breaks even at five to eight years, how long is it going to remain breakeven before it becomes tax-positive?
Oh, that's when, that's the turning point. So it's tax-positive, once it breaks even, then the next year you're tax-positive.
Okay. Thanks.
Sir? Gentlemen?
I think if your predictions are true, if we can generate 6.5 to 7.5 million in net property taxes, then just my calculation's at basically 30 cents per million in revenue off the tax rate, that's, on a $300,000 home, that's about a $600 to $700 reduction in property tax per household.
I'm sure there would be no objection in that from anyone.
No objection on that.
My math is right.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to get a little bit into the details a little bit more. And it's not really with regards to the report, so I've been involved with the Pettingill Road conversations for what feels like a very long time, probably 10 or 12 years. We've had, we've had opportunity. Of course, we're under nondisclosure on those opportunities, and we, obviously, from the way the land looks, we haven't succeeded in any of those opportunities. When you have something this attractive, I guess what I'm looking for is, you're looking for direction from us, I'm looking for direction on how do we get there? You know, how do we, how do we actually, I mean, people tell me, you've got to build it and they'll come. Well, I'm not buying that. I don't think anybody up here is going to buy that. I've certainly let them speak for themselves, but I've never heard any of them say that they would. We work closely with the airport, we listen to the state, yet we do, you know, we differ in opinion. My question is, is, we've got these reports, we've had a number of reports, the council has always been supportive of economic development and of Pettingill Road, we have other development going on in town, up at Exit 4. The airport would like to see nothing more than something happen. Where do we go from here?
I was specifically asked to not make a recommendation with the Londonderry Housing and Redevelopment Authority, to not, to not, they really wanted more information.
Well, I'm not with the Londonderry Housing and Redevelopment Authority, I'm giving direction from the council. You guys ask what we want, there's the question.
Okay.
I mean, if you have an opinion?
I do.
It's an opinion.
Yeah, it is an opinion. The experience, let's start with the experience of other settings, other settings that...
You guys okay with this?
Sure.
Yeah. In those settings, which I believe represent Centerra Business Park, which is right across Route 120 from Dartmouth Hitchcock Hospital, if any of you have visited the hospital, you know where Centerra is. It's been successful. And there, the infrastructure was built in advance, so they built it and they came. At Pease, much of the infrastructure was already there when the air force, the day the air force left. It wasn't particularly well-adapted to the needs of business and industrial users. So initially, at Pease, you may remember, the thought was, we're not going to do anything until we get a big user. So there was a thought of recruiting Mercedes-Benz, aerospace companies, none of that happened, none of that happened. And eventually, Pease shifted gears and moved towards a more broader recruiting effort, and did some infrastructure improvements with the help of state government, and they came. So the experience that I can cite on two other parks here in the state, both of which have been successful, is they built it and they came. If you don't build it, it will take longer. If you wait, you're more likely to get a large user, but if you build it in advance, and if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Chairman, the Pettingill Road project is on your capital improvement program to be built this year at about 12 million. Now, that doesn't mean you have to do it, but I think that if you build it, if you do decide to front-end this, you will get your money back. And it's hard to say, will you get it back quicker if you build it than if you don't, because we don't know, but that there may be a user floating over here now, tonight as we speak, we just don't know. I compare it to fishing. The chances of catching a big fish are not great, but they're always there, okay? You always have that possibility. You're more likely to catch many small fish than one big one, but, so, I don't know if I'm being clear enough. I think my, if it were, if it were my community, I'd probably honestly lean towards building it with, because I, having done the analysis, I'm very confident that maybe in five years, maybe less than five years, maybe a little bit more than five years. But this land is just exceptional in its development opportunity. Now, the question that probably is right behind that is, you have a lot of funding options. I spoke to the regional director of the Economic Development Administration. You've applied for $2 million in EDA money in the past, and you didn't get it. You didn't get it because you didn't have a bird in the hand. So it's sort of a catch-22. Without a bird in the hand, you don't get the money. Without the money, you don't get the bird in hand. So how do you break that cycle? The regional administrator of the Economic Development Administration was very encouraging. He said, if you have a good study, I spoke to him during the course of this study, he said, that shows some potential, a reasonable opportunity, he said, I'll be willing to put it into the hopper and see what happens. That, so, that would, the last application was for $2 million. Maybe that's something that brings a comfort level to the town. So if, I think, all I can tell you is if I were sitting on that side and the vote came up, I would vote for it to front-end the cost, based on the success of other projects. And actually, the lack of success you've had with this land being marketed by two very experienced developers in the absence of that infrastructure, not getting anywhere.
Okay, I've got Tom, Tom, and then Joe. Tom?
In your conclusions, you talked about being able to support between 10,000 and 15,000 new jobs. Is your market analysis granular enough at this point to be able to give us some type of a forecast as the types of jobs you're talking about and the approximate quantities?
Yeah, I ended up believing that you could do about, of the 150,000 square feet a year that I estimated you could absorb, 100,000 square feet of it was industrial, and 50,000 square feet was office/retail/hotel. So most of the jobs would be in the industrial category, much like the development that's already around the airport. I don't know if that's, so, you know, you'd have, it's hard to know the exact mix of industrial users that would come in, there'd be warehousing certainly because of the excellent transportation links that the neighborhood affords, so, a mixture, but more industrial warehouse than office/retail.
And the, has, have you been able to assess also what the, I mean, you've talked about the benefit to the town in terms of potential tax revenue and so forth. What, a major partner in this, we believe, has got to be the state. So what is the benefit to the state in terms of the business profits tax and enterprise tax?
I did estimate that in Portsmouth, at Pease, I didn't estimate it here, it was a little bit outside of the scope, but it was very significant at Pease, and the state had a good payback on its investment, which was, as I remember, about 40 or 50 million in bonds that the state floated. It'd be nice to see the state participate in this, but you have to remember that New Hampshire is the least proactive state in economic development in the country. Now, the state's growing very...
No.
Sorry. The state is growing now very slowly. It used to be able to get by with that economic development approach and have really a very prosperous, growing economy. We've added, it's either, we've added 6,000 people, 4,000 people since the 2000 census in three years in New Hampshire, the whole state. In the 1980s, we added, I believe these numbers are correct, 180,000 jobs in the state. In the 90s, it dropped to about 95,000. In the decade of the 2000s, it was only 6,500 jobs statewide. So, you know, the state's either going to have to step up to the plate and do more in the economic development field, or be satisfied with what it's never been satisfied with, which is slow growth.
I think it's imperative, especially if the state, on one hand, is going to downshift state costs to Londonderry, that they also need to help in developing some of this valuable land to reimburse all of us some of those costs.
The, your, I believe it was your chamber of commerce had a forum in, it was during last year, I can't remember the month, but there were excellent representation from Senator Shaheen to the State Department of Transportation, and nobody came up with any solutions. Your elected rep, nobody had any money. That's the way it is.
In the, in the other two projects you cited, Pease and, what's it, Centerra?
Centerra.
Are those in cities versus towns?
Centerra's in Lebanon, which technically is a city, but it's essentially on the edge of Lebanon and Hanover. I think if you move to the next property, it's right on the town line, so it's...
But my point is that that's a different form of government. You want to get a bond passed, all you've got to convince is a city council, 10, 12 people. Here, you've got 2,000 or 3,000 people you have to convince.
Pease was a very complicated arrangement, though. I think you're right about Centerra being the city of Lebanon. But Pease was very complicated because there were a lot of restrictions on Pease. The land is still owned by the federal government, it's leased land. So you had the federal government, you had the town in Newington that was involved, the city of Portsmouth that was involved, most of the development, essentially all of it is in the city of Portsmouth, but a lot of Pease is in the town of Newington. So that was actually more complicated than here, but Centerra, I'd grant you, probably was more straightforward politically.
But you see my point, that you've got to, if you want a general obligation bond, you're going to have 60% of the voters here, and, you know, and I hate to be direct, but what's in it for them to pay five or eight years of taxes so that they might see some sort of economic benefit after that?
Well, I would say they will see the economic benefit, in my opinion, my judgment. And, you know, I just want you to know something else, which is, the Londonderry Housing and Redevelopment Authority was absolutely a wonderful client, and I never got, had any pressure one way or the other. These are my opinions, 100%, they're just great clients. I hope I get a chance to work for them again, because there was no pressure, no direction, no, we want this, we want that, you know, it was just, do a good job here, and I've done the best I can.
No, that's appreciated.
You understand? So my feeling is, you said may, I say will. And I've been in other situations where, in towns, where a bond issue failed, and then with better information, or more clear information, a more supported presentation, and I'm not, I'm not trying to diminish the work the town has done before I came on the scene, it was good work, and in fact, a lot of this affirms what the town had done before. But maybe there's more information available now, I don't know, has there ever been a formal vote on this? Was it ever brought to a vote, or is it just a sense that it wouldn't go?
It has not been brought to a formal vote at this point. We did apply for the Obama stimulus packages, I was one of the people who went and met with our representatives. It's always been, I think the general opinion of the council that we've operated from the standpoint of a bird in the hand.
Yes.
And is that correct?
Yeah.
So that's more or less been the general opinion of the council over the last, and it was different members over the last 10 years.
I can understand that, but I think you see the results now of 10 years waiting for the bird, the bird hasn't come. And part of that is because we're in a terrible environment here economically.
Interesting.
So it's not all that, but the experience of other settings is, build it and they will come. But I think Londonderry should do what Londonderry feels comfortable doing, but...
So anytime Pettingill Road, sorry, anytime Pettingill Road comes up, we have a bunch of people that jump on email and on the blogs that basically say, you know, that are in opposition, basically say, there's a lot of empty buildings in the airport area, you know, explain to me how this road will really, you know, bring us that much more revenue. I mean, I know you have a very, you know, very intense analysis here, but in a short couple of sentences, how would the people at home listening to this right now that are jumping up and down saying, are you kidding me, I'm not going to be paying more taxes for a chance? How can we best describe it to them?
Centerra has occupied 861,000 square feet of new space, and there was already an industrial park in the, at the airport in Lebanon. Pease Trade Port has absorbed 4.5 million square feet of space, which is 350,000 square feet per year. I'm running at just barely half of that, 150,000 square feet, not even half of that. Horseshoe Pond in Concord, which, excuse me, is also adjacent to Interstate 93, has averaged 158,000 square feet of space per year. And Exit 20 in Tilton averaged 114,000 square feet of space per year. And if you look at Londonderry itself, it absorbed roughly, I think it's a million and a half square feet, if my memory is correct, over that five or six-year period. You have, in this, what you have to do is say, okay, what have other parks done? Centerra is a great location in one sense, but it's very isolated, it's not, it's not adjacent to a major airport, it's on the far north-western corner, this far western edge of New Hampshire. The accessibility isn't nearly as good as yours, so I think that the experience of these other parks is supportive of the 150,000 square feet a year. I might just, I don't want to take too much of your time, but I had laid out, in my opinion, that you have 900 acres of prime land available for development, the road is fully permitted and engineered, but this is something to remember, the approvals for the road run out in 2014, you'd have to start the permitting process all over again, which may be easy, I don't know, but you would have to get it re-permitted. The zoning is appropriate, you have excellent access to the interstate highway system, you're adjacent to northern New England's busiest airport, water and sewer with adequate capacity can readily be extended, the airport environs have demonstrated long-term marketability, the land is pre-assembled, there's only two development entities that own the majority of the land. The land is physically ideal to accommodate a wide range of business uses, including manufacturing, warehouse, office, lodging, and retail, and you have a large skilled labor force nearby, half a million people within a 40-minute commute up here, so...
I guess I might have asked the question wrong, I'm talking about having that extension built.
Yes.
It's all there right now, all that airport area is there, there's empty buildings, et cetera, I mean, it's all the facts that you're just stating, it's all, it's all there now.
Yeah.
It's beautiful, it's, you know, it's, but the point is, is that we're talking about building a road, so what I'm saying is, how does that, people always come up to me and say, how does building that road change everything?
Yes.
From where it is now, where we have, you know, open buildings that are not being leased, that, you know, so all of a sudden, we make a road and everybody wants to build more buildings that potentially could be empty, like there are right now.
Yeah. The, the land that would be opened up by Pettingill Road, there's nothing comparable or competitive to it at the airport or anywhere in New Hampshire. It's large sites that would be made available, that could be cut, custom-cut to the right size. The vacant land that's available around the airport now that's serviced is predominantly small sites, one to five-acre pieces of land. Nothing, so there's no comparability between what would be available if you built Pettingill Road and what's out there now. As to the existing buildings, a lot of those are relatively small, 25,000-square-foot buildings often cut into two, so they're 12,000-square-foot tenants. They're available to accommodate a pretty good range of tenants, but not all of them. So Pettingill Road is not competitive, it's complementary to what's there now.
That answers better. I have one more question, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay?
Feel free.
So on one of your bullet points, you said that a major end-user committing to the area and reaching breakeven about five to eight years in a normal market environment, well, not in a normal market environment, to say the least. So in the current market environment, if we were to do it today, how long do you think that would be?
It probably would be more towards, if the market stayed exactly the way it is today, with that relatively high vacancy and relatively low absorption, you're looking at more the outside end of that, eight years. And I think you said with, six to eight with a major user? No, it's one year with that half a million, that's without a major user, six to eight.
Okay, with a, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
You get another one?
Yeah.
You'll set you?
Yes, thank you. One of the concerns that I have, and it's going to sound a little weird because of the tough economy that we're in, but I think we've been, I mean, you go back 50 years and you plot the economies, and it's very much approximates a sine wave curve with an upward trend. We've been in a downward swing for about five years now.
That's right.
And I think by virtually any economic, any economic analysis, we've bottomed out and we've just started to come back out. There's still a lot of people hurting, but the housing market is getting some traction, the jobless rate has come down, it's still not where it needs to be, but it's, the economy has turned, and it really hasn't started back up again, but it's turned. And if we were to go full out with a plan like this, given our budget cycle, probably the first time we could... the first time we could start spending any money is probably the summer of two thousand fourteen, given our budget cycle. And we know that putting a spade in the ground probably would be eighteen to months to two years after that point, given the approvals that, we have a large project going on in town now that's been kind of spinning its wheels for two to three years. And so it takes a long time to get these projects going. So this is a, a long way to the point I'm making, is that I, I think we're, we may be in danger of missing this next upswing, if we're not, if we're, we don't move quickly enough. That by the time we get our act together and say, gee, look at all this, all this economic flurry going on around us in a few years, and we decide to do something, by the time we get our act together, we might start to tip over the other way and be on another downswing in another five or six years from now. So I guess that's one thing to consider, is that, is that these swings every five or six years, it takes, it takes us, or it takes any government
We get a pay.
A long time to get into the swing and to have that economic impact, so that those ten-to-fifteen-thousand jobs can stop being populated before we start swinging down again. So I guess that's, that's the hard part. It's kind of, it's kind of like market timing, you know? Even the professionals don't do a good job at it. Is, is how do we time a large project like this? How do we convince the citizens to make an investment here, given the layout? The, we're going to have to predict the future of the, of the economic story as it, as it unfolds before us, and try to time this such that we take advantage of the, the rising tide that we, we believe that, you know, the economy's going to go through. It always does.
Well, I think that your characterization of the, where we are in the economic cycle is spot-on. I think that nationally, we've probably bottomed out. We're not growing as fast as we'd like, but it's been consistent. We've added jobs essentially thirty months in a row, and the last quarter being an exception where GDP actually contracted a little bit. We, we really have almost four years of consistent GDP growth, very weak. So we, we're, where we are in the business cycle is, we've come off the bottom, we're not, we're not rocketing through the business cycle, but we're consistently plodding along. So with that, I think that the outlook is, at least, if we can see forward a year, most of the economists are saying that's what, that's what's going to continue to be the case, and then in two years. So I think that if you, if you did it now, given the kind of construction timing that you're looking at, I think it'd be pretty good. You know, you could always wait until things are booming, but then you might, by the time you get it built, be on the downward side of the slope. So I, I think the timing now, in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, having this available, probably is pretty good. Remember, this is a long-term investment. I've got like a fifteen- or twenty-year build-out, so it's not going to get filled right away. This is something that, you know, is going to be a, a long-term investment by the town, hopefully with some partners, state, federal, private, but it's a long-term. You want to see a payoff as soon as possible, but I think, I would urge you to take the long-term view. Another one that comes to mind about build it and they will come is the Lakes Region Business Park, which was a joint venture by the city of Laconia and the town of Guilford. It's in, actually, both communities. And there again, they built the whole road, extended sewer, extended water. It's been modestly successful, going through the tough part of the business cycle.
Anything else, gentlemen? I'll set.
I thank, I thank you very much, yes, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, sir. I'm going to go to the public.
Oh, okay.
Because we are in public comment, I apologize. Anyone from the public comments? Yes. Name and, name and address for the record, please.
Kathy Wagner, Seven Fiddler's Ridge Road. Russ, thank you to the LHRA for confirming what? Former counselors, and many people have sat and said what Pettingill Road could bring to this community. I guess it's nice that it's an outside consultant who's a professional at this, confirming what many in this room has been saying all along, for what the development up at Pettingill. Now, to go to Joe's point, that he gets a lot of emails and a lot of opposition to this, is because many people feel that if we build a road, we're helping the developers. I didn't see anything in the report on that, but what's your feel on that?
Well, you are, you are. But the developers also have responsibilities. For example, the way that this has been promulgated by the town, water will not be extended as part of it. That will be a private responsibility.
So that's the responsibility of the developer?
Of the developers. All of the side roads off Pettingill Road itself, of which there will be numerous, we don't know exactly, but there'll be, are totally the responsibility of the developers.
So it is not the responsibility of the town of Londonderry to bring sewer or water?
You build the main road, they build all the little capillaries coming off that open up their land. So to open up their land for development, some of it is open, of course, because it fronts directly on Pettingill, but the, all of the service roads on the side will be private developer. One, one thing I didn't mention also, that maybe goes to some of the comments we had, which is, once you build Pettingill Road, the land that is within this Pettingill Road district is now assessed relatively low because it has no access. As soon as you build a road and have sewer, that, the assessed valuation of that land will increase, I think, by seven million dollars or more, with no, no new users, just by virtue of it having frontage. So that helps out, too.
And what do you consider a bird in hand?
I would say a, a user that's large enough to, to move the town off the dime and build the road, that's probably a little judgmental. Certainly, a half a million square feet does it, because then the road pays for itself. Does two fif, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet do it? That's a, that becomes a judgment, more of a judgment.
So, John, since I don't have, or Cynthia, anybody in town that's two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet right now?
Harvey Industries is between three-hundred, four-hundred thousand square feet, so you're looking at small-size Harvey Industries.
So one Harvey industry up there, basically, you're telling me starts the, the bird in hand.
That, that would probably do it, but it'd be up to the council to, to weigh in on that when it came.
Yeah, the number we were giving is...
That'd be very, that'd be very attractive.
Number we were giving is, at one point, and correct me if I'm wrong, if it was a five-hundred-thousand-square-foot building we could breakeven in three years, was I think the number we were given, right?
I, I had it breaking even with five, depends on the, what kind of building, but I had it breaking even in year one with five hundred, but it depends on, you know, is it a modest building, or is it pretty, you know, standard building? Is it rich building?
And, and in your presentation, you talk a lot about grants and, from the EVA, entire grants, and we, I'm sure, are number-one thought from the feds and, and from the state, if there's matching grants out there, but we've got to come up with the money on ourselves because we've got to believe in the project, correct?
Right. Grants are hard, difficult right now.
Right. And so if we do come up with granting, and it does offset, it, we need the commitment from the, from the council. And if we do come up with, and the only thing that I found disturbing in this whole discussion is that if we do make it, I think it's up to proactively of the council to make a decision here tonight, if they're going to move forward with Pettingill Road and not worry about the timeframe, because my understanding is, this project would not take two to three years to get going. It could happen within six months if the funding was there. Does, can anyone dispute that?
Well, Kathy, what I was thinking is that if, if, since we're, we missed the budget cycle this year, so we'd have to get into the budget cycle next year, which...
But we could hold a special meeting if we got instant funding.
Right, we could hold a special meeting.
If we got, if the funding was there, if there was a mechanism for funding.
If, if you had a bird in hand, you'd probably hold a special meeting.
One thing I might mention about timing that...
Before the next budget cycle, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing about timing that I think you should bear in mind is that interest rates are exceptionally low right now, particularly municipal bond rates, and they're unlikely to see these bond rates again, and that has a major impact on the net cost over, over twenty-year bond issues. So, you know, bond rates right now are just, they're at an all-time low. None of our law, in, none of our lives have interest rates been this low, so...
Yeah, I think...
And they won't stay there, in my opinion.
I, I think you would find agreement for everyone, and we've capitalized on some of those bond rates. Here's what we dealt with on our budget cycle this year. We took a downshift of a half a million dollars in retirement costs. We took an uptick in a quarter of a million dollars in, in health costs. The school took one-point-five-million dollars. We're looking at very possibly, for the first time in a ten-year period, a one-dollar tax increase across the town per thousand. So we're looking at, you know, people with a three-hundred-thousand-dollar assessed home are looking at a three-to-four-hundred-dollar uptick in their, in their taxes. That's, while we, while, I think everyone hears and would like the opportunity to build Pettingill Road, these are the things, the factors we have to weigh against, it is, is that there's just only so much in the piggyback.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
Yeah.
One, one thing that, that I think, when you look at the demographics, that I'm very concerned, I mean, it's hard for people to take a long-term view when they can't pay the bills that are on the kitchen table tonight. And so it's hard for them to say, well, let's, let's think four, five years down the road. They're thinking about next week and the next paycheck. But when we do force ourselves to think long-term, we know that the, the demographics in our community, our little community of Londonderry, are aging, and the average age in our community is moving up. Our young people flee our community, they go where the jobs are, and they're not here. So we're not, we're not filling that hole behind us, and we're all, the baby boomers are getting older, and plus, we've created an environment that's attracting retirees, which is accelerating the demographic. And unless we find, in the long-term, a solution, a ten-to-fifteen-thousand-job solution, where the young people, as they grow up, can go to and then reside here and stay here, then I think that, I think our demographic is not sustainable. I, I think we're, the long-term picture becomes bleak in a community that can't pay for itself. It's kind of, it's kind of like that, the whole social security demographic is, the young people are paying for the retired people, when there are no young people anymore. In the, in the, in the economic bubble, or, or cone of, of our community, then our community demographic becomes, I, I believe, unsustainable. And I think it's something that, it's very concerning to me, that unless we find a way to provide those jobs for those young people to stay in the community and to, and to fertilize the, the community to a wide, wider-ranging demographic, to keep and hold that, that average age steady, and maybe move it down a little bit, I think it's very concerning.
So I think the next presentation we're going to see tonight is going to be about economic development and what we need to do next, I believe. I think, so are there any other questions for, I think it's a great point, it's a great segue. Are there any other questions for this, Tom?
Just to kind of give you a perspective, this year, we're looking at, in the town, about an eighteen percent, eighteen cent increase from the last year in the tax rate. You know, approximately twelve-point-five million in, in a general obligation bond is going to add about thirty cents for the next twenty years to the tax rate. So you could, my, my point is not whether it's good or bad, it's just that you've got to convince sixty percent of the voters in this town, and so I guess the question is, what's in it for them? And while that might be crass, you know, that's a realistic question. Why should they vote for something like that when they may not see it for five or eight years, and they may be gone in five or eight years? So why would, why would anybody who's planning on leaving pay that extra freight?
You have to have the mindset of an investment, meaning money, and you put money into the pot today and take more money out tomorrow, and I think...
But that's, excuse me, but that, that's what I'm looking for, is you give me the argument, because I can't come up with one, so you tell me what the argument is, that so I can tell some voter, this is, this is a good deal for you.
Right.
And as much as there's, you know, there's, there's this view out there that, oh, you're not looking forward, I'm looking at practicalities.
Yes.
People vote money, and people vote their wallet, and you give them, you give them an incentive to do it, they'll do it. But, you know, frankly, tell them, I know it's definitely coming, you know, that means nothing to me, because if you're wrong, you're not coming here and reimbursing everybody, are you?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, so you got...
But I'm not wrong, so I don't have to worry about that.
You would eat without coffee, yeah.
With all due respect, I am not wrong.
Okay, then, then it should be a real easy jump for you to say, to, to convince the rest of the voters here why they should do this.
So let me take it here, okay? Why don't you, why don't, this has been a great session.
Thank you.
Great report. Why don't you guys in the LHRA get together and come back and answer Counselor Frieda's question? Because you want to know what? We want to know the answer, because we don't know. Okay? You might be right, okay? I, you also might be wrong.
I, I could be wrong, but I'm not.
But that's good, because now I've met the first perfect person I've ever met.
Oh, far from that. But I am confident in my conclusions here, but I understand.
And you know what? And we want to believe you, but we need to make a plausible argument to the voters, and we don't have one.
Okay. I think what I've done is, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just to make sure that, I want to make sure that your assignment is clear in my mind. I believe that I have done essentially all of the research I need to do, but I don't think that I've presented it to you tonight in as concise and clear a way as I would if we were at a deliberative session on the bond issue. So what, I don't think I need to do more work, but I think I may, it may be useful to the council if I go through the research that I've done and do it relatively quickly before this gets out of date, and come back to you in a month or so with a more, with a PowerPoint presentation that walks you through it. I was told I'd have like six to eight minutes tonight, so I didn't, I didn't...
I, I am a taskmaster, but I'm not that much of a taskmaster. Here, here's what I would suggest to you is, is that the chairman, the chairman of the planning board is sitting behind you.
Okay.
Okay? He's been in town for years.
Good.
Talk to him.
Okay.
He knows all the issues.
Okay.
Okay? If you can convince him.
Okay.
Okay? Then you can probably convince us.
Good.
Because if you can't convince him, and he's very theoretical, scientific, and everything else, you're going to get nowhere with us.
Okay. Now, you understand, I'm not trying to advocate for Pettingill Road.
I understand.
It may have sounded like that. I'm trying to advocate for the town to do the right thing, but I'm, but if you don't, you know, to be converse, no, I won't come back. But also, if you don't build it and nothing happens, that won't bother me either, in a sense. You see what I mean? I'm, I'm not, I don't have skin in this game.
Exactly. Exactly.
Yep.
I do.
Yeah.
I live here.
That's very good.
Okay? They live here.
Yep.
The LHRA. So all I'm saying to you is, I want you to be right.
Yes.
Help us move down the path.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
I'll, I'll meet with your chairman.
Thank you, I, I appreciate it.
Just to illustrate what I'm specifically looking for, if the taxpayer understands that they're going to pay a hundred-and-fifty dollars more a year, from, from, say, year one, and you're saying at build-out to Counselor Dolan's idea that it's going to save them four-hundred dollars, where does that, one-fifty, 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 and four-hundred, and four-hundred, what year does that start to meet? Crossover, and now we're at an equal point, and then we're going to start seeing the tax rate go down with these scenarios? Does that make sense to everybody? So, so that you're, when we present this to the voters, we could say, here is the logical argument, here is the financial argument, because as the chairman said, it comes down to pocket, money in their pocketbook, and that's what we have to convince them of.
Okay.
I think also, for...
Art, I'm sorry. You okay with that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Will we...
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I think also that the reason that you got forty minutes instead of six minutes is because we've been scratching at this now, for several years now. We, I think unanimously want a Pettingill Road development, we just can't figure out how to get it done, and so we're really looking for some, some help with that.
Okay. Ultimately, it is your decision, I'll inform it as much as I can.
Appreciate it, thank you, Jim.
I, I also think that during this, this exercise, that we have to, or you have to show the people what these landowners are going to be responsible for. Like I said, a lot of people, like Joe said, you know, would think whether we're going to put in all the secondary roads, are we putting all the sewer in, are we putting all the water in? A lot of people think that's what we are doing, and maybe that's not the case. So I think we need a sales job here as far as we do have owners up there, what are they going to be responsible for, and what is Pettingill going to be responsible for? I think it's key, because we have to convince the taxpayers.
It is ultimately a partnership between you and the private owners, so you're right, I will do that, I can do that.
Just like I cap this, by saying I agree a hundred percent with what you've all said. And I, I love the comment, what's in it for them? And essentially that's what we were hoping this report might help people to be able to determine. I think, you know, as you've said, this road includes, who knows? So I think that Russ's study is in-depth enough for people, maybe for, for could be the first time, to have a sufficient amount of unbiased data to be able to tell what the heck this is all about.
You guys have done a great job of engaging us, you've piqued our interest, you have us here, now close us.
Close the door.
Okay.
Very good, I thank you all very much for your attention and interest. And my object, my objective, I do have skin in the game actually, which is my credibility. And so, and I'm very protective of that. After forty years here in the state, I'm, I'm both wary when I'm doing an analysis and confident when it's finished. So I think that I will be able to bring a more focused presentation to you after consulting with your planning board director.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, I really appreciate it. And once again, I thank the authority for the confidence they had in me and that really the, the lack of pushing me one way or the other on this, just give us the right stuff was from day one. And I appreciate that.
It's very much appreciated. Mr. Chairman, are we putting this on the website? Yeah, we see too that this goes up on the website.
I will.
Thank you.
May I join Ms. May for the presentation?
Next for public comment this evening is the Community Development Department proposal. So you guys have all the answers to the last conversation?
We'll try.
Well, we have some thoughts on how we might get those answers.
Outstanding. Please proceed.
Since we had a change in leadership, one of the goals of the council as articulated over a number of, on a number of occasions was to figure out how we might be able to do planning and economic development more effectively. And what do we mean by more effectively? Well, first, at lower cost to the taxpayers with better delivery of service on an ongoing basis. And so we've thought a lot about that, and by we, I mean myself and the Planning and Economic Development, Development Department about how we might reorganize the department. And frankly, that's where it started. But we went beyond that, listening to the council, listening to the goals of the folks who work here in Londonderry, who participate in the development of our community. And we decided, let's think about every aspect of this. Because really, when it comes down to it, what Mr. Tebow was talking about, what the Londonderry Authority asked him to look into, what Kathy was asking about, what you've asked about is, how can we as a community maximize the resources that we have here? It dawned on us when we attempted to ask that question, that really we're all community development, that every one of us has, has skin in the game, to borrow a phrase from Mr. Tebow. And so we began to rethink every aspect of this. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. May here, and we're going to briefly go over this. What we're looking for is some guidance from you as, as a council as we go forward. Ms. May?
Thank you, Chief Hart. I want to first of all thank the council for this opportunity this evening and also to thank Chief Hart for his unwavering support and guidance from the time in October when we were left without a leader. When we talk about Team Londonderry, we're looking at community development as being the entire, and a more global view, the entire town itself. It's not just a single department. And the reason that we can be so successful here is because this is my first experience working in the public sector where every department, every board, every entity has been so supportive and works completely together. There is always cooperation and assistance. It's a cohesive group, and it's a definite asset to this community that you have such good people that work here and are so dedicated, because I've never experienced that before across the board. Excuse me. The thing that we thought about is that we had a lot of challenges that we faced. A year ago, there were a number of issues that came up, and we've been managing those issues on many fronts. And despite what could have happened, we could have had some setbacks in October when our leader left. And that didn't happen. The perception in the community was that we may have, we may not have the adequate resources with the people who are here in our department to actually do the job. And I think as far as we know right now, that nothing else, nothing significant has dropped off of the radar. So what we did was sit down right away and we talked with Chief Hart and said, okay, we need a plan. And at first, as it evolved, we were saying, can we do this? And it has emerged into, we definitely can, and this is how we're going to do it. Now, in executing this plan, this is not something that's going to automatically start next week when hopefully we'll get your blessing on this and say, yes, this makes great sense. But it's something that actually has been ongoing for quite some time. We realized back in the beginning of April last year, when certain kinds of external forces were taking away the attention from directly looking at planning to other things, that the group of people that are in this room, John and Jay and I, we, we said, well, we have things that we have to keep moving forward. And we figured out how to do that, and I think we've done that very successfully. We continued to manage the master plan. In October, I stepped in and worked with the team to develop a more collaborative approach to getting that project moving forward. And I think we're very successful at this point to date so far in really seeing that become a reality. So we're looking not at something that is new to us, we've been doing it all along. The goals of the department are to improve efficiency, do it at a lower cost, and provide better service. And as the reorganization plan has evolved, we began to realize we could do it with the three people who are in the department now with the ongoing support of the remaining departments within the town offices, because it is such a collaborative process. We've also identified that there is a need, as we have been talking about earlier this evening, for economic development services. That's the one area where we just need more help, and in particular for things like business retention, that's critical. We need a liaison to those economic development organizations that look for the kinds of answers that you're searching for. And we need somebody who we can turn to that provides the intellectual advice we need for economic development decisions, where to get grants, how to, how to move that forward. And so by becoming a leaner and more highly professional department, looking at our positions with cross-responsibilities and, and this is the first time I'm going to introduce this, but we're looking at contracted services to provide that economic development support along with, again, continued interdepartmental cooperation. Okay, this is going to show you that we have gone from four different job descriptions, and we're actually combining that into three. They're integrated to reflect what's already been evolving over the last several months. And in this case, as it was in the past, the town manager is going to play and has played a very critical role. He is the public face, he's the interface with the town council, and also the interface with economic development. This is the person who can go out there and reach out and make the introductions. And the contracted economic development specialist can support that as well as our department in making sure that we're looking at the right initiatives moving forward to make this town more attractive to the businesses that we're trying to get here. We've been successful in working, because we work so well with others within our department, and we don't see that changing. The three people who we have would become the Planning and Economic Development Manager, and that would be me. Just in case you didn't know, I have twenty-eight years of experience, both on the private side and in the public side. And what I bring that many planners don't have is that I probably have fifteen years of design and build experience as a landscape architect in working with actual contractors and builders and designers. So I know what it's like on the other side, I know what, what the pitfalls are when you come to a town office and you need a response, and what's expected of you. So what we've put up there are some very key points in terms of responsibilities. There's going to be some things that, as a town planner I did, that I'm also going to be doing as the manager of the department. But also some of those things have been moved over to our G I S manager planner. Now, John is not new to planning, he's been doing this for fifteen years. He's very familiar and has worked with planners in many communities for that period of time, first when he was with the Regional Planning Agency in Nashua. And so it's been a natural progression for him to get involved. And again, when I got here a year and a half ago, I started engaging John in a lot of different things, not just mapping, but real planning discussions and initiatives. And he is our technical guy, but he's also very excellent with people. So any of the, any of the agencies that use him for, for technical support, they can attest to that. And then the third member is Jay. And Jay's actually been working two positions over the last, I don't know how many years. Where the first one is she's been managing the zoning board and the conservation commission. And this is pretty much a self-maintained, self-directed role, and she's done an excellent job of doing that. She would continue to do that, and also she's supporting the, the community, or Planning and Economic Development Department. She keeps us on track and on task, and so we depend greatly on Jay and her expertise. Some of the departments, the projects that we're looking forward to doing, many of them we've already started, they're in various stages, include these that you're seeing coming up on the board here. We're hoping that by and large we would complete most of them by the end of the year. And one of the things that the town council was looking for at the end of last year was to complete that developer's handbook. And there are a few things I think we need to do in order to make that a better document and a more useful tool for developers as they come in. But that is very much on our radar. These projects are integral to streamlining the process so that we can become more efficient as a department. Then, of course, there are a number of exciting opportunities that are out there. These are the things that attracted me to want to work here. They're some of Londonderry's biggest assets. Its, its position in the I-93 Route Three corridor, the airport has just come out with their new master plan. They just, they have some really good things that they want to be doing. Woodmont Commons is moving along. We just have many really significant kinds of things going on. And we have a number of existing businesses that are talking about, thinking about, and may want to expand over the next several years. And so we have to have attention placed on them. And we need that economic development support. So I'm going to turn it back over to Chief Hart, and he's going to talk about the economic development contracted services and how that'll work.
So what we looked at really was, we have a budget for the Planning and Economic Development Department. That budget, which presuming passage by the town meeting next month, contemplated a full-time community development director. So while we changed the name of the department, we budgeted that amount. So we've talked about how we're going to streamline the tasks, flatten out those tasks, make it more collaborative with a manager. So we felt it's important to compensate people for the commitment they're making to this new role. And as you can see, this year we've determined that, provided we have council approval, that we'll go forward with some basic increases concomitant with the job descriptions that Cynthia outlined a few moments ago. Similarly, those increases would be reflected in F Y two-fourteen and two-fifteen. Now, the change between the previous and proposed budgets for this year is about fifty-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars. So that's this year which we're in right now. Next year, extrapolating that out to the whole year, it's a, as you can see, about a hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-plus dollars. In the following year, it'd be extrapolated at a hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand dollars. Now, part of that is a savings. It is the change clearly between the amount of money that we would spend under the new reorganized Planning and Economic Development Group and that which is left over. However, let me be absolutely clear about this. That our concept is to commit that money, or a significant portion of that residual amount, to those contracted services. It is imperative for this program to succeed that we are able to increase as needed and as quickly decrease. And therefore, we need to make the commitment to fund that in a creative manner. And we think we have some real thoughtful ways in which to do that. And we're going to look for some assistance hopefully in, in coming up with the financial ways to accomplish that goal. But we, we can't expect that there'll be savings without paying somebody to do that economic development role. We also see that there's going to be growth if we're successful in this. And that growth needs to be shepherded by this contracted service person who would be a part of the team that brings forward these Planning and Economic Development initiatives. So the advantages to those contracted services are primarily cost-effective flexibility in response to the needs of the community. It can expand and contract as needed, much like the need for perhaps legal services or accounting services might be needed at some point and contract significantly. We hope, and if we do go forward with council blessing with an R F Q, that the, our description of what would be required would include all the ancillary services that might come with an economic development professional. In some cases, that might be assistance with planning aspects. In some cases, it might be things we're simply not thinking about right now, depending on what comes to Woodmont Commons or what comes should a Pettingill Road project of any description take off. Most importantly, however, Planning and Economic Development needs to be responsive to community goals. We've recognized a need, and we've clearly seen that we can have improved efficiency within our Planning and Economic Development Office at a lower cost with better service, using this model as a model going forward. What does going forward show for us? Frankly, it shows that based on what we've looked at, and we've taken hard, honest look at what we're doing in Planning and Economic Development, we think that, that the three, the three jobs as described by Ms. May a few moments ago will serve this town in that capacity for the next, you know, three to five to eight years. That using this model of contracted services, we are looking at a relatively flat budget increase going forward. We're also going to look at some other things as part of this. Changing our fee, fee structure, streamlining our processes. We're hopeful, as Cynthia opined, to work with our collaborators in the community and the boards and the volunteers who serve on those boards to perhaps make this process. the boards and the volunteers who serve on those boards to perhaps make this process even more streamlined going forward. So we'd appreciate your input, your thoughts, your questions, and hopefully, your blessing as we go forward. Thank you for this time.
So if I move over to the other chair, maybe you can just stay and...
Sure, absolutely.
Without even having to ask them, I can imagine they're going to ask for what's going to be the accountability piece.
Well, the accountability piece...
For the contract services.
Yeah, I understand. The accountability piece would be twofold. We, in the RFQ, would lay out exactly what the benchmarks for deliverables would be as we go forward. There'd be targets, and frankly, we'd have to think about how we reach those targets and in what manner those targets would be described. Because I think your question is really the most important one. How do we assure ourselves that the money, as taxpayers, that the money we're spending, that we're committing to this process, that comes out of our pockets, that we spend our time earning, is delivered in a manner that can achieve the goals that we've laid out today? So we're working hard on that RFQ to make sure that the deliverables are clearly articulated and that they're well-defined, and that the person who accepts, or the group that accepts the contract, or that we accept for that contract, understands that there needs to be these clearly well-defined deliverables as a part of the contract. How do we follow up? We follow up in two ways. The first level of contact would be through the Planning and Economic Development Manager. And as Cynthia indicated, we feel that the town manager, really as the face of this community in some respects, on a day-to-day basis, anyway, needs to take a broader role in managing this piece of our community resources.
Gentlemen, questions? Joe?
So first, I want to comment on the Page 6, the Planning and Economic Redevelopment Realignment. I think it's refreshing to see people thinking out of the box. I think it's a great plan, in my opinion. I think we have the right people in the right places here. When you look at that one slide, and then you skip over to Slide 10, which talks about the achieving continued success, I'm a little confused about taking four people, going down to three, and then having a larger budget. Maybe I'm reading that wrong, or on the delta between previous and proposed budget? Can you talk a little bit about that?
It isn't a larger budget. It's a, it's a flat budget, presuming the usual contracted pay increases that would come with those positions. So the only difference in the budget would be, first, the savings achieved by not filling the position. Which savings would be wholly rolled over to payment for the contracted services? Initially, we figure the, all, if not, most if not all of those contracted services would be for economic development. However, it wouldn't be out of the realm of possibility that planning might have the need for other contracted services going forward. We don't see that this budget is any different from today's numbers. That's simply the savings which would be allocated over towards the payment of these contracted services.
Okay, because as this flashed up on the board, I wanted to make sure we, everybody at home, that they understand that this line item in this department is not going up. It's staying...
That's not an increase, no. What it is, is the fun phrase used by folks who like to use jargon is delta. What that is, is the change between the previous budget, which is today's budget, and the proposed budget. In other words, that amount that we formally paid to the person who was the Planning and Economic Development Director, and that amount which we hope to pay a portion of to our economic development consultants and other professional services. Now, one of our hopes is that we're going to be able to figure out, in short order, how much this amount can expand and contract on an annual basis. You know, this is new. And while it's been tried in other communities throughout our country, not very many. And we're really in the vanguard of looking at planning and economic development differently. So we're not asking for any increases. I don't expect there'll be increases next year or the year after. There will be an amount committed to this aspect of spending, however.
No, thank you for explaining that clearly. But I just wanted to make sure we see that line item, that total at the bottom, that that continues year after year. What we're doing is we're taking that money, and we're paying for the three people still, and we're also taking that extra money that was saved from that one position and applying it to the contracted services, to say it in simple terms. Now, the other piece that I liked a lot was on another slide. You said, "Use it or lose it." Not, so that's great to say that you're not going to be, just because they're not using all the funds. Where does that funding, say, for instance, if you didn't use $20,000 or $30,000 of that department, it goes into the general fund?
Well, currently, that would be the scheme in which it would be handled. What we're going to look at, however, is ways to, at least in part, defray some of the costs, and perhaps in a year-to-year mechanism. And again, we're trying to be creative. We're trying to, the money we don't use, that we are hopeful we can figure out a way to keep that in the budget so that the following year, that money doesn't, we don't have to ask for, let's say, using, for ease of addition, $100,000. Again, if we only used $70,000 in one year, well, that means next year, we should be only asking for $70,000. If we only use $70,000 again, you know, that money has come down. So we're looking at really trying to be as judicious and prudent with the resources of the taxpayers as we possibly can, as we, at the same time, hopefully, enter a period of significant growth for our town.
And as this, I'm sorry, one more, and as this continues to go down the road, we're going to, as we test this whole process out, it may be even beneficial to almost budget some of the contract services instead of, like you said...
That's, next year, it will be a line item in the budget that we commit and say out loud, "This is what it is." And this is what we anticipate that it'll be.
Thank you. The last thing that I have is on the department goals. I think, to me, just as one council, I think it'd be important to have dates attached to each one of those, just as a suggestion. As you have a goal of succession as to when you have to, you know, complete this project, I think that a date would be good to shoot for. I mean, I know it's year over year, but, okay, we're doing this project, here is a date.
Yeah, we do have, I mean, internally, we have dates where we anticipate achievement of goals. So yes, I appreciate that. And internally, we certainly do do that, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the council?
Yeah.
Yes, Jim?
On the RFQ that you're proposing or putting together, what audience will that go out to?
Probably people like Mr. Tebow or other like-minded service providers of that ilk. Ilk, that sounds like a bad word, doesn't it? Of that type. There are a number of that sort of service providers in our state. We're probably going to try to broaden it out a little bit as much as we can. Again, you know, we're trying something new here, and we're not going to jump at the first opportunity. We're going to be very considered in our approach to this and kind of be a little bit thoughtful on the front end as we begin to sort of go out into uncharted territory a little bit.
Now, you had also said, Bill, that there have been some communities that have done this on a limited basis. What has, well, how long have they been doing it?
I'm going to turn to Cynthia on this.
And what has their success rate been?
The communities that are looking at more creative ways, they range in sizes, been some Midwestern cities, and I believe it's either Cincinnati or Cleveland, completely threw out their entire department 10 years ago. And went on for a few years and said, "This really isn't working for us." And so, they've rehired. Specifically, are they doing this with the contracted services? I don't think 100%. I think that they've brought back on employees. And we're looking at this as being a way of being able to ramp up when we have those times that we need it, but also to kind of save the town a little bit with those costs that you have no control over, with health, retirement, the things that are really hurting us this year. So, and using, and having that resource also allows us to tap into a group of individuals who stay current in terms of what's happening now, where sometimes if you're involved in the day-to-day of your own world, you tend to lose sight of that. So for me, it's just, what I can tell you now, it's just anecdotal reading through planning journals and just regular business periodicals that I've seen, "Oh, yes, we're doing this, and it's definitely different. We have to look at it a different way." So I'd have to actually research specific communities that are going for contracts for that sort of thing, but it is being done.
Yeah, sorry, sorry about that. Similar to what Cynthia just said, the places I've seen it have been in the state and local government trade publications. It's fairly new concept, three to five at the most years old. I think it's in response to the chiseling away at public dollars as a consequence of the Great Recession, and people in response to that adversity, looking for ways to accomplish the same objectives. Frankly, as we began to talk about it and think about it, we kind of thought, gee whiz, this is really maybe a better idea than we thought, because, you know, we kept thinking about, well, what are we facing? What are the issues that we have? Business retention, the practical movement of plans through a planning process. And we kept thinking that, gee, it doesn't really make sense to hire a full-time person to sit and wait essentially for a plan to come in. We know they're coming. We know there's going to be development. Similarly, what we need is somebody who's good on the upfront sales. We can pick it up from there with the professional services that we have. So why not take a look at this? So part of our RFQ will be to essentially have somebody to maybe help us get this off the ground in a couple of ways. One, we want to have, and frankly, we don't still have an answer, but we want to have performance-based pay. We've talked about that. We still don't have an answer of can we do it? If we can do it, how do we do it? What's the most effective way to benchmark those levels of performance? We know with certainty that, you know, somebody coming through the door, that isn't enough, because it may be years, as we heard Mr. Tebow talk about it, maybe years before there's a delivery on the other end to the taxpayers. So we need to have somebody assist us in thinking that through, and it might take us a while to get there, but that's really the goal. And frankly, I don't mind being in the vanguard. I'm pleased that, once again, Londonderry kind of tries something new. And you know what? Here's what I expect. We're going to fall on our face once or twice with this. And then, we're going to get ourselves up, and we're going to learn from that mistake, and we're going to do it more efficiently, better than anybody else. And we have the greatest diamond in the rough right here in Londonderry, and I'm excited for this opportunity.
That's the attitude I like, Chairman.
All right. Anyone from the public? What's your ask? You want us to say, go ahead with the RFQ?
Just give us the sort of general approval to go down the road with this project.
Gentlemen?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Make it so.
You've been wanting to say that, haven't you?
You practiced that.
Next, we're going, we're coming out of public comment, ladies and gentlemen. Is there anyone else with public comment for the Town Council this evening? Yes, Anne?
Is this the public hearing part?
There is no public hearing this evening, but this is public comment.
Does it have to be on what's been discussed?
You can come down, and you can talk about anything you like. Name and address for our clerk, please.
My name's Anne Champa, and I'm at 28 Wedgewood Drive. I'd like to know the status of my application for the Planning Board alternate position.
I have asked the town manager to put yourself and the other applicants on the agenda for the next meeting, which is March 4th.
Thank you very much.
I guess that's it.
That's it.
Anyone else for public comment? Let it move from public comment. We're going to move to the Assessor update on town exemptions. Karen?
Good evening. Karen Marshawn, Assessor for the town. I've been asked to come before you and give you an outline and a comparative of where we sit with our exemptions. It's my understanding someone came in a couple of weeks ago asking that we increase the income levels for the elderly exemption for the coming year. So I've done up a spreadsheet here with about a dozen municipalities, along with Londonderry, and comparing the incomes for the single person, the married couple, and the assets for the elderly exemption. It also goes on to tell you the amounts off in all the categories, and I've also added the disabled exemption, and then some blind exemption, if you're interested in that. We last updated our elderly exemptions in 2010. There had been an increase in Social Security in 2008 of 3%, and in 2009 of 5.8%, and we did an increase of about 10%, 9 to 10% for, excuse me, for 2010. There was no increase in Social Security for 2010 or 2011. 2012, they had a 3.6% increase. And starting January of 2013, they had a 1.7%, I believe, percent increase. So the last couple of years, they've had a total of 5.3%. If you look at, if you just want to start with this, under the elderly, what the single person cannot exceed, and if you go all the way over to Wyndham, they're the only community that is higher than us in that category. The other, I believe, 12 are lower than us. And if you go to the next line, which is the married person, there are five in that line that are higher than us, and that's Bedford, Goffstown, Huxit, Nashua, and then again, Wyndham. So if you're just talking the income levels, you can see that we are not out of line with these 12 comparatives that I've used. If the council wanted to do something on that sheet that I sent you, I've done out percentages increased from a 5% to a 10%, and what the amounts would be. So if you went up a 5% on where we are, we'd go from 37.7% to 39.6% for a single person's income. Now, their income includes Social Security, any wages they may earn, and its pension, and its interest income. And then, 5% for the married couple would go from 46.5% up to 48.8%.
I'm sorry, I'm not following you. 48, where is that located on the sheet?
It's on the two-page. If anybody needs, do you need one of those, Mr. Frida?
Yes.
Okay.
It's in the...
It's in the...
Never mind.
Well, since we can't change the budget at this point, I don't think we're making changes tonight.
Well, I think that's a good point. The, unlike the federal government, which can print money when it wants more, we can't. And the thing with these exemptions, I know I've been dealing with over the years, there's certainly a certain amount of sensitivity. On one hand, we want to help those who are needy. On the other hand, we have to keep an eye on the ball in terms of fairness, because for every dollar Person A saves, Person B has to kick in an extra dollar.
That's correct. This money is distributed through the entire town.
So if we, so if we were to, so any action that we take is budget-neutral, but it may not be taxpayer-neutral.
That's correct.
So I think that's important to understand the math associated with that. This is a zero-sum game. Some people will get a higher tax break, other people will get... Some people will get a higher tax break, other people will get a higher tax bill in order to pay that tax break. And that, and that's, you know, how our society works in many ways. Those who are most needy are supported by those who are more able to pay. But, so, before we get all crazy about this, I just want to make sure that we understand the math associated with that, and that's why I think that we haven't gone completely crazy with giving away exemptions, because we are trying to be fair-minded in that people who are paying the bills, you know, can't afford to be, to have an unlimited debt in their pocket to help others. There has to be some amount of fairness struck here, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So of these towns, is there a line here that I'm missing as far as percentage of elderly within those towns?
If you go down, just a few more lines, it tells you the number of granted applications. It says total number elderly exemptions, and if you just look at Bedford, the number is 132. And you follow it across, Londonderry is 200, and that's for the year 2012.
But that's number of exemptions that were given. I guess, I guess my point was is that everybody tells us that we're largely aging community, and that more and more people are in the, these type of brackets, age brackets. And I think it would be interesting, because we were comparing and contrasting, you know, household incomes and medians and all the different exemptions for single and married couples, but I think it'd be a good contrast to look at, out of the population that we have compared to all these other towns as well, how many people are actually more affected by these decisions. Does that make sense?
I'm just asking a different way. Karen, how many do we deny this year?
One, two, we do not deny very many at all. People that are applying for this are under these guidelines by a great deal.
Exactly the point, Mr. Chairman, if I may. You know, one of the things that the gentleman did point out is that, you know, and that you also talked about was 37,700 is one of the highest single exemptions that's out there. And so I think, I think that, you know, maybe if we lowered that, I understand what Council Dolan just spoke about, but if we lowered that, I think that gets us more in line. Am I right or wrong? Because your chart here talks about increases. I don't ever, at least when I was here at the last town council meeting, I was actually talking about the opposite, polar opposite of that, sort of increases and decreases. So if that was a nine times .95 or times .94, you know, what would, what would that be? I don't know if we ever talked about increasing at all.
Well, we had, we had testimony at a recent council meeting by someone who was representing the elderly demographic that was asking for an increase in the.
Oh, increase in the, okay, increase in the amount of money that they can bring in for the exemption. Okay, I get you.
Right, increase in the exemption, which would lower the tax.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, I get you now.
So what I've heard from Karen is, is that we have 200 people, one or two were denied. So the question becomes is, is, was, you know, what is representative of the demographic? If only one or two were denied, sounds like we're at the right place.
Well, wouldn't they look at the dollar amount of the exemption and walk away and not apply?
They may or may not. I mean, you have much more experience at this than we do. I mean, they have a conversation generally with you at the counter.
Absolutely. They not only have a conversation, but we urge them to make the application because they don't understand what we need for paperwork and so forth, and people will realize afterwards, oh, I do qualify, and they thought they didn't qualify. We have very few that we are denied, and it's, and some of them that might get denied, might be in one year and out another year, depending on the stock market, because they might have more interest income, or their stocks might have been better in a particular year, and their assets might have been too high versus their incomes. So it isn't just one thing that we look at, it's, you know, their assets and their incomes.
Karen, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I apologize. Just one more, one more question on that. So looking at this as well, as far as the taxes, the tax rate goes of these communities, because I think even though now that I'm, I looked at it opposite, I apologize for that. But looking at this, it's showing now that we have a higher threshold. But what are the tax rates in comparison as well? Because again, when you have somebody that's making $37,000, and if they're paying higher tax, you know, apples to apples, oranges to oranges comparison, do you have any information on that?
Well, I know like Bedford, I know dairy is higher than that. We all know that dairy's tax rate is six or eight dollars, you know, higher than ours. So we know that other ones are, I would say, are in the 20 to $22, $23 range. They're pretty similar to ours. I can't say that exactly about every one of them, but.
But you feel we've probably fallen the middle somewhere?
Yeah, I think we're, you know, we're not falling behind at all as far as these numbers are concerned.
Karen, you mentioned, I'm sorry, the gentleman that came before us mentioned that, if I can remember his testimony, he was talking about, since the last time the exemption level was adjusted, there'd been a couple of cost of living increases, Social Security, one. And so it was his opinion that some people's income swelled beyond the upper level of the exemption. Do you know, can you confirm that? Or, you know, was it the 200 number today? Was it 222 years ago?
No, it stays like this 198 to 206. And some, like I just had one on my desk today, the lady sold her property and moved away. So, okay, we're at 199 today. All the ones that we've renewed this year so far, they're all fine. We are not counting, as I said at the very beginning of this, that they had a raise in eight and nine, and we increased the numbers in 10. Then they didn't have an increase in 10 or 11, but they had one in 12, and they had a small one in 13. That one in 13 doesn't count until we start renewing the people at the end of 13. We're looking at what people made in 2012, which is a 3.6% increase in their Social Security since 2009.
Tom has an interesting question.
Yes.
Karen, do you have to meet both tests, income and asset level?
Yes.
Okay. And if you look at Hooksett in Londonderry, just as a comparison, the income for single and multiple parties, or whatever MP means, or married persons, it's relatively the same. But the exemption, the asset limit in Hooksett is 350,000 versus Londonderry's 122, basically. But they have 267 exemptions versus our 200, and I was just wondering, and they seem to be way off, they're the highest.
They are. They, that and, yeah, they're even a lot higher than Wyndham.
Right, so would it be fair to say that people are getting bounced out of Londonderry because of the asset level and not the income?
No. No, you get, you know, one or two, one or two. It's not, most of the people do not have a problem with the assets at all.
Does the asset level include your principal residence?
No. Does not include your house or two acres of land, supporting land for that property. So it's your money in the bank. It's purely your cash, your car, if you have a Winnebago, another property somewhere else that's a second home, that is considered an asset, but not your property here in Londonderry.
So if your, your thinking is that if Londonderry, for example, increase its asset level to similar to Hooksett, we wouldn't have a big increase, or we would?
You'd probably get 10 or 15 more people, you know, 10% increase, not, not a big amount. My guess is what happened in Hooksett was a town meeting, and somebody increased that amount on the floor at a town meeting, and it got passed. You know, it just, either the elderly people came, or there was a group, you know, that came and amended something. I can try to find out for you and see how long that's been that way.
That'd be interesting to know.
Yeah, see where it came from.
Anyone else?
Yes, Tom. Can you go through the next three lines below the shaded group, the 98, 9, 123, 6?
That is the amount off of, say I'm in that 65 to 74 age bracket, my assessment is, and I qualify, and my assessment is reduced by 98,900. So it's about a $2,000 break on that first group. And then when I become age of 75 through 79, I get 123,600 off my assessment. And then anyone 80 years and older, it's 164,800.
And interestingly enough, these exemptions are all means-tested, and probably the one that is the most impactful on our budget is the veterans exemption, which is not means-tested. And that's, that's the maximum the state allows us to do, right?
That's correct.
$500 per veteran.
Right, and $2,000 for each disabled veteran. Just so you know, that as far as value is concerned, for just the elderly exemption, it's a $21,500,000 reduction off the tax base. So there's a lot of value there.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to declare myself ineligible, and I'm going to abstain from any discussion on the blind exemption, since I have, I have a family member who would be impacted by that. But the other exemption.
Let the record show.
But the other exemptions, I would like to make a proposal that, that, looking at the, at the, at the document provided by the assessor's office, I would recommend that we, we change the single exemption, the married person's exemption, and the asset level. I would recommend we, we increase them, all three of those by 5%.
Discussion. Do I have any discussion?
That would make income, single person, to be 39.6, maximum income. The married person's exemption, maximum 48,800. And the elderly asset limit to be about 127-ish.
127,600.
127,600, thanks, Tom.
All right. Is there any discussion before I ask for a motion?
Yeah, actually, something very similar that I was going to propose, thank you, Councilor Dolan, but the only difference was is that I was more comfortable with bringing the elderly asset limit up as, as people, I guess, put away their money and buy homes and buy different things. I mean, they got to pay taxes for the additional home, too, and, you know, and, you know, they're in the years that they want to enjoy life. I don't think that we should infray upon that. Basically, if they have a motor home or a second home, and they're enjoying those retirement years, they get kicked out of this exemption. So I would go for, I would like to go for, you know, at least 250 for that.
You want a total of a $250,000 exemption?
Yeah, elderly assessment limit, has a total of 250 instead of the 121.
Talking about assets, is that correct?
Yeah.
I just want to get the right term.
Talking about the elderly assessment limits, where the 121 is right now, changing that to 250.
Those are asset limits. That's money in the bank.
Right. No, it's also Winnebago, it's also second home, it's things that people throughout their lives have said, you know, when I retire, I want to go and I want to be able to have a nice Winnebago to go to Florida every season, and that I want to be able to, you know, have for my children a second home, and they pay taxes on that as well. So I just think that a lot, a lot of times when you look at the people that are median households at the $89,000 range, if you look at the type of communities that are in that 89 to 112,000, they're going to afford those type, type of things so that when they retire, they can enjoy life a little more. So that, that's the only additional thing that I would look at, the 5% I think is great on the other two. And again, just for discussion, I throw out the 250, I mean, obviously something.
Is it discussion or a motion?
Discussion.
Gentlemen, discussion on a 100% increase to the asset limit. Well, why do I make this easy? Does anyone want to, why don't I ask for a poll of the council? Are you in favor of a motion for a $250,000 asset limit? Counselor Butler?
No.
Counselor Dolan?
No, can I?
You can expand on it.
Why don't we take these one at a time, so that?
Right, that's what I'm doing. Counselor Frida?
Well, from what Karen said, you know, comparing it to Hooksett, she didn't think that moving that up really, you know, brought anybody additionally in, so.
Because they got to qualify for the other two.
Right. So I don't think that's the, you know, I could consider maybe like one, bringing it up to 150. I don't think it's going to have any effect, from what Karen's experience is.
Counselor Green, do you want to make a motion? Since you know what the vote will be now.
Can I, can I change the number? I just, I just think, and you're other professional, I mean, I think that she's the professional Dan Sheehan, and we have to go by that. It's just, again, I just think of all the people out there that are, you know, working right now, and what they're trying to, you know, think about when they retire, and I think it's very sensible to say, you know, I want to have a Winnebago, I want to have a second home. I don't, I don't understand how that would be only $100,000 worth of worth. So I question that, that, in that aspect. And I think there's a lot of people that could be bumped out. That's just my opinion, so.
But then somebody else has to pay.
Yep.
So, you know, so you have to.
So if there's not a lot of people, why are we afraid of increasing it?
You're making a counterargument to something that, you know, is not the relative point, okay? The relative point is, is that they have to hit all three. What the assessor has recommended to us is that she thinks will have little to no effect. So if you, if you want to, if you want to change your number, I mean, feel free to change your number.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Suggestion. We might get stuck on that. Why don't we take the easier ones first and take?
I thought I was taking the easier one.
Joe, if you would, if you would yield, would you allow me to make a motion?
Absolutely.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to change the elderly income single exemption limit to 39,600.
Only the single?
Yep.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes affirmative, 5-0.
I'd like to make a motion to change the elderly income married person's exemption to 48.8.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Chair votes affirmative, 5-0.
Be careful now.
I'm done making motions.
Mr. Chairman?
Are you going to have a discussion or a motion?
Motion. I'd like to make a motion to increase the elderly asset limit to $200,000.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion fails on no second.
May I make another motion?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to increase the elderly asset limits to 175,000.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I tried.
Fails on no second.
I tried.
May I try?
You got the answer, so you may as well try.
We increased the, the single and the married person's income exemption by 5% each. I would, I'm going to make a motion to increase the asset limit by 10%, which is double what we, we did for the income level, which, Tom, help me with the math on that.
133,700.
I would make a motion that we increase the elderly asset limit to 137, what is it?
133,700.
133,700.
I have a motion to increase to 133,700 for the elderly asset limit. Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Thank goodness. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes affirmative, 5-0. Thank you, Karen.
Could I ask you to take a look at the disabled? We have kept the. We have kept the disabled income levels and asset levels to be the same as the elderly, because when someone turns sixty-five, they no longer receive a disabled exemption, they come in and they apply for the elderly exemption. It's the same, it's the same amount off the tax bill, it's the ninety-eight thousand nine hundred, I believe it is. And this is for people who are receiving social security, they're under sixty-five, and they can no longer work their regular jobs. So I would ask that you would consider that.
So let me see if I get this all right, and you'll let me know. So what you're asking for is, is that if I would entertain a motion for the same limits for disabled single, disabled married, and disabled asset limits as we have for, currently have moved to have for elderly, of thirty-nine thousand six hundred for disabled single, for forty-eight thousand eight hundred for disabled married, and for a hundred-and-thirty-three thousand seven hundred for disabled asset limit. That would be the motion you would ask someone to move on.
That's correct.
So move.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those, second, do I have a second?
Yep.
You got it.
Second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, chair votes affirmative, five-zero.
Right.
What about the blind exemption?
Totally up to you. It has been several years since we changed that, it's just that amount right off the assessment, there's no income requirements of that. They have to have a letter from the Education Department, State of New Hampshire, stating that they are blind, and that information gets to the state from their eye doctors. There's just certain criteria that they have to meet, to be legally blind. So it's totally out of our hands, as far as who qualifies and who doesn't qualify, the letter comes to us from the state.
Mr. Chairman, have a question on that.
Sure, please.
So why is there so many varied amounts? I mean, we see, we're at thirty-two, there's a hundred-and-twenty, there's a hundred-and-thirty, ninety, and there's also fifteen and twenty...
It started out when the blind exemptions became law, it started out at fifteen thousand dollars, or fifteen-five, that was the minimum. And some, you know, it's just been counselors and aldermen and selectmen have changed it over the years. But you're right, there is a large discrepancy between the bottom and the top.
So I won't make any motion, Mr. Dolan?
So just, Karen?
Thank you.
So I understand if your house is assessed at a hundred thousand dollars, and you qualify for the blind exemption, right now you'd get thirty-two thousand one hundred off the hundred thousand?
Correct.
Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion to increase the blind exemption to fifty thousand dollars.
I second that motion.
All right, let the record show that Mr. Dolan has stepped down. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, chair votes affirmative, four-zero.
Abstain.
The next step for this is going to be a resolution.
Four-zero, one of the stents, he stepped down.
We have to do this through a resolution with a public hearing on the second reading, that's what's required by the law.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to skip an item here in the agenda, bear with me, because you guys are now breaking my records, and no one can be quiet this night. I'm going to skip down to the town manager appointment of Stacy Thrall as the senior affairs coordinator.
As you know, Mr. Chairman, we recently had a vacancy in the senior affairs coordinator's position. We went through a process consistent with town ordinance and regulations. After an interview process, it was my decision to appoint Ms. Stacy Thrall to the position, and I'm asking for council approval to welcome her board.
Hi Stacy, how are you?
Good, thanks, how are you?
Thank you. Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
No.
No questions. Can I have a consensus for the town manager to move forward?
Yes. I just, I just, do you have a comment? Real quick? I just wanted to thank Stacy for stepping up, and I work with you on the senior affairs committee right now, and I think you're, there couldn't be a more perfect pick for this position, and I wish you luck, and be here if you need us.
Stay around a long time, Joe's going to get old, and he's not going to have any money.
And I'm not going to get any exemptions.
Thank you, Stacy, congratulations.
Thank you, I'm very excited, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda this evening is, and see, all you guys wanted to go to the school deliberative session, I'm not getting anybody there, is London Dairy Fire Department ambulance collection process. Gentlemen, name for the record, please, Laura Clark.
Chief Captain McCaffrey.
Acting Chief Darren O'Brien.
Gentlemen.
Good evening. Tonight, we have put together a ambulance billing presentation and associated costs with the ambulance per request of the council. And as soon as Fred gets it up here, we'll begin. So we have a PowerPoint presentation behind you that we'll go through, and then if you have any questions throughout, you know, feel free to ask. So what this graph is showing us is over the last four years, the call volume that the department has endured, two thousand nine through two thousand twelve, and it's broken down into total number of calls, number of EMS calls, and number of fire calls. Currently, the staffing at the three stations, or, excuse me, staffing at three stations is one firefighter, one paramedic, and a lieutenant. Each station is equipped with a engine company, one ambulance, and a specialty piece, you know, forestry equipment, CSU unit for the hazmat district, and so on. Okay, what this slide is indicating is, on August sixth of two thousand twelve, we switched our staffing model. The section to the left is showing what we were previously at, and that was...
No, it's ten, still the same.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, wrong slide. So ten personnel per group, what that's telling you is, each station is equipped with three people, so three each go out on whatever pieces is called for. What the slide to the right is recommending is if we were to put additional staff on, meaning two firefighters per group, what that would do for us. That would suffice for having a first-out run ambulance at Central Station, and also be able to encumber a specialty piece, being the ladder truck, rescue company, or whatever other pieces called for. So it just puts another piece of apparatus into play. And at that point in time, with that two additional personnel, we're able to capture more calls, less use of mutual aid from other communities. And then, it would be at that point in time that I know there's been talk in the past of being able to contract out to other communities to provide ambulance services and so on and so forth. It would be my recommendation, not until this point, that we were to do so. Because I think, taking the number of staff that we have now to try and bargain out for such a thing, I think it would be detrimental to our own community. I don't think we have the staff to do so. Okay, ready? Okay, what this is telling us is how we respond on emergency medical calls. I know there always used to be questions out there, why is there an engine company going to ambulance calls? Well, now what we've done is by putting three people on each piece of apparatus, nine-one-one breaks down the system, and I can, I get copies of it to show you, they break it down into Alpha, Bravo, Delta, so on and so forth, as the call comes in. That call, our communication center determines whether it's a single ambulance response, which would include just the three guys at whatever station is the closest to the emergency medical call, or if it's something that's above and beyond, cardiac arrest, seizures, breathing difficulty, that warrants to get the assistance of the closest engine. So let's say if the call was down the south end of town, it would be the ambulance out of Station Two, and the next closest engine would be Engine Three out of Central Station, okay? All right, so the following slide is going to break it down into, this is Councilor Butler's request of the operating cost of the ambulance. So we've broken that down into the staffing, the ambulances themselves, the equipment, the equipment that is needed to supply the ambulances, and associated supplies. This here, you'll see, this is the salary line item on page thirty-seven of your budget worksheet, and it breaks down the salaries, benefits, and associated costs for personnel to provide the ambulance service. What we did here is...
I'm just studying, could you go back a slide?
Yep.
I just wanted to...
Doing the best I can, there it is, three-hundred-and-seventeen thousand.
And that, those are loaded salaries, right?
All your benefits.
Mm-hmm.
You have your retirement in here.
Yeah, that includes everything.
Retirement's four-twenty.
I'm good.
Okay, so what we did here is, we took the schedule prior to August fifth, so that was, this is the slide I started touching upon earlier. August sixth, we went to the three, three, and three. Prior to that, we were doing three people up at Station One, two people at Station Two, and four at Central Station. So what that's telling you there is, we had two people on the ambulance at that particular time. The number of calls that we did in two thousand twelve emergency transfers was sixteen-hundred-and-seventy-one calls, and we actually broke that down into the amount of hours that the ambulance was committed to service, which I believe was, what, Freddy, sixteen-hundred-and-sixty-six-point-three hours, or something like that, I believe.
The first part of the year, it was nine-hundred-and-twenty hours for each of the calls, and then the second half was the six-oh-four.
Okay. So what we did is, we took the amount of hours versus the salary of the individual, and the individuals that we took were top step in their categories. So top step firefighters, top step paramedic, and top step lieutenant. So that can get, that can go no higher, but it can be lower, depending on where the individual is in his grade of steps right now.
That also includes all benefits.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So taking the nine-hundred-and-twenty-two hours, times in it by those hourly rates, gives you the figure to the right. So per call, prior to August fifth of two thousand twelve, it was costing, personnel-wise, it was costing eighty-one dollars and two cents per call. Since August sixth, when we changed our staffing level to the three, three, and three, again, it's broken down into each individual category, the amount of hours that were committed to transport, and cost per call, staffing-wise. Any questions there? Next one, yeah, okay.
Why is a paramedic less than a firefighter?
The paramedic that we took is one of our senior paramedics, but he's not on the family plan, he's a single individual. But he's the senior paramedic at this time, actually.
Those aren't standard rates, those are actuals.
Correct.
See, so we got to get him married and get him kids.
Good luck.
More fictitious exemptions.
Please proceed.
Okay, so this slide here is indicating the ambulances that we have in service right now, the initial cost of the ambulances when we bought them, and the scheduled replacement of such unit. So right now, we have medic two, which is the two thousand four, that's due to replace this coming spring, the truck is on order, and it's due to arrive, I believe, in May or June. So what we've done is, we've changed from a nine-year replacement cycle to a seven-year replacement cycle. Reason for doing so is just the amount of mileage that is put on the vehicles. You know, back when we were trading them in, prior to, on the nine-year cycle, it was sixty-five, seventy thousand. Lately, for the last five, six years, it's been over a hundred thousand, over a hundred thousand miles.
Because we're doing more calls.
Doing more calls.
Is there a, is there a math model that compares this, that you're doing with police vehicles, to go to a lease program versus a purchase program?
There isn't a math model, but we've begun to talk about it and look at it.
I think that's what... Doug can answer, Doug is our operations director, and he is in charge of the vehicle replacement process, so if you have any questions or reference to that, by all means.
You kind of have to separate a police car, staff vehicle, to this type, it's very specialized. London Dairy runs advanced life support, there's refrigerators, there's heaters. If you were, I guess if you compare us to a private ambulance service, you see, they just run a regular Econoline van. They're just taking somebody from A to B. If we're looking for the quality of care that the town is, you know, expects, we kind of build a specialty vehicle. We're getting nine years out of them, it's the max, they're pretty much falling apart come the nine years. We try to get to that point where we're not putting engines and transmissions in it, you know, keep them through brakes, tires, and exhaust. After that, the hinges are falling off to things, so...
Other providers, would it be, I guess, banks, I guess, financial institutions that would be providers, that would be even interested in entertaining lease?
Well, we've looked at lease purchases before, it was one of the things that, a decision made over, I mean, Dave Karen was much involved in this, when we were looking at, we were trying to say, all right, if we lease X amount of trucks in X amount of years, and try to keep our costs balanced. And he wanted to move to a process where we always had cash on hand to pay for our rolling stock, that's why we're in the program we are. You know, clearly a decision made over my pay scale. But yeah, we can, actually, this current truck that's coming in is in a short-term lease.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So it's kind of bridging the gap, the seventy-five thousand dollars a year that we're putting in for capital reserve for ambulances is barely making it. You know, obviously, it's one of those things that we've shorted in the last couple of years due to the economy, you know, the trucks needed.
So if we were to go with a rolling lease program, would it be seventy-five thousand plus or minus, is it a wash one way or the other?
It's a wash one way or the other right now, I think we're a little short either way, so I don't think it makes a difference, you're just paying, if you're going to lease, we're paying them interest, as opposed to us, if we have it in capital reserve, we're not paying those interest payments, and we can put it more towards the program, that's all it comes down to.
And the value of the ambulances each year fluctuates, so it's hard to tell, on a lease program, if you say, this year it's a hundred-and-eighty thousand, next year they could change something, it'd be two-hundred thousand dollars, and we'd still be short in the long run.
Is there a market with smaller communities for these used ambulances?
Doug, at the end of the year...
The last, believe it or not, I think the last couple trucks we've got, we get about eight to ten thousand dollars at the end of the lifespan. Nobody wants them, I mean, they go to...
Who's buying electricians and plumbers?
Absolutely. I believe our last truck went to Western Mass, it was a small community starting an ambulance service. You know, the fire department wanted to buy an ambulance to say they could get into business, and that's where our last truck went.
They only get one call a week.
Probably not.
Since we're in trucks.
Yes, sir.
Since we're, since you're using a reserve, not having a lease fee, I don't recall, did you have a repair number in your calculation?
That's coming, yeah.
Okay.
It's coming.
Currently funded at fourteen thousand dollars a year that we spend to maintain the three trucks.
What would be the differential between the lease and the cost plus the fourteen thousand?
That fourteen thousand dollars buys us brakes, tires, oil changes, state inspections, and lights, windshield wipers. It's not, you know, engine overhauls on these things, so if you look at, you know, newer trucks on a similar rotation, just in a lease program as opposed to us buying them, you're still going to end up inspecting them, we're still going to have to put tires and brakes and windshield wipers, that's, it's preventative maintenance what we're doing with the ambulances, so...
Shouldn't we be actually trying to figure out, presumably a lease includes major repairs, at least the price?
I'm sure we could look into it, I'm, you know, being in this...
I'm just saying that we should, we should have the, we should figure in the real cost of the repairs, not just your, you know, fixing the tires or something like that.
Well, that's what I mean, we try to, we're replacing the vehicles before we get into major repairs. And I think last year, we put a transmission in one of the trucks. It's the first transmission we put in, in the sixteen years we run in ambulances. So it's getting to the point, all right, that ambulance, that's the one that's getting traded in this year, is end of its lifespan. So instead of looking to budget eight thousand dollars out of a... So instead of looking to budget eight thousand dollars out of a fourteen thousand dollar account, you know, add eight thousand dollars for us to put a transmission in the vehicle, we think it'd be better to put that eight thousand dollars in capital reserve to keep that on track and keep replacing them in every, you know, six or seven-year cycle.
I'm just looking at it as to calculating what a-
The true costs are?
The true cost is, especially when you're gonna bill an insurance company.
Okay. Thanks.
Slide ten. This one here is, again, page thirty-seven of your budget worksheet, and it breaks it down into the training, the management services, general expenses, repairs and maintenance, and vehicle repairs and supplies. Next, Freddie. This is the first line there in reference to training. I'm gonna have our EMS director tell you what's entailed on our training yearly that we have to go through to keep the paramedics, the intermediates, which are now being converted to what they call advanced EMTs, and just our regular EMTs for continuing in. Fred?
On the previous slide, it showed us training benefits, and the reason for that is, this is all contractual. The firefighters, we provide them their entire EMS training every year. They're in a two-year cycle. Half of them renew this year, half of them renew next year. So we do it over a two-year period. We do the entire course every other year. The other things that we do, we do provide, every year we do CPR training. Every other year, we're gonna do ACLS. The, the other year is PALS, which is pediatric life supports. It's all broken down to what used to be the DOT requires, and it breaks down to what we do. We do advanced cardiac life support. We do pediatric life support. We do neonatal resuscitation. All those items are what we provide our, our training around, and we train on new equipment. We train on bloodborne pathogens every year. Skills review is determined by our quality assurance as well as requirements through National Registry of EMTs. So for every year, we provide three hundred and twenty hours of EMS education, and that's for the four shifts, and then additional training wherever we can get.
Thank you.
And next will be management services. This is our billing company. As of the present time, it's Coastal Billing Company out of Massachusetts. And that line is budgeted at thirty-five thousand dollars. How this is based upon is they are paid five percent over whatever we collect. So that fee has really never gone over the thirty-five thousand dollars, but it could, depending on revenues that are collected. Okay? That's what we've paid up to this point so far in two thousand twelve. General expenses, this is, this is the goodies that go on the ambulances and fire trucks. IV supplies, bandaging and trauma equipment, airway supplies, oxygen medications, and so on and so forth. So to outfit the three ambulances and keep them running and stocked is about eighteen thousand dollars a year. And then the advanced life support equipment that's carried on the engine companies is about four thousand dollars a year. This is another repair, but what this is covering, this is covering our preventive maintenance contracts. IV pumps, stair chairs, stretchers, auto vents, the computers, cardiac monitors and defibrillator, the IV pumps. So again, that's broken down into what it costs for each, for the three ambulances and the three pieces of fire apparatus that also carry certain equipment. And this is what Doug had just mentioned. Over the last several years, this is what the average has been spent on maintaining the three ambulances on a yearly basis. And then that amount is, right there is a thousand dollars over what is actual budgeted. So if you add all those numbers up that I gave you, Counsel Butler, this is, this is where we came out to. That's seventy-five thousand dollars, that second line there, that's indicating the monies that are supposed to be put in yearly for the capital reserve fund.
Okay.
Okay. So now getting on to the, the other line in reference to our rates and what we've collected and so on. This is the insurance providers that we collect from and how much is collected from each. So it breaks it down into the Medicare and the other companies that we, our billing company collects from.
Okay.
These are the current Medicare rates as of two thousand twelve. This is broken down into the way they categorize things is BLS, ALS one, ALS two, and mileage. And if, if you want me to explain those any further, I can do so, or Fred can do so.
Well, I think the, I think the important part about this is, even if we bill for ALS one, the four hundred and thirty-three dollars, Medicare, even though Medicare sets the rates, they're only gonna pay eighty percent of that. That's what they pay.
Okay.
The remaining amount, the eighty-six dollars and seventy-three cents, is what the patient pays. Whatever our rate is, we can't charge Medicare people more than Medicare. We can choose to charge a thousand dollars for ALS one. Medicare's gonna pay us three hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-five cents, and the patient is only legally obligated to the eighty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. That's a lot where, the other amounts were like, if you have AARP, the AARP will take the eighty-six dollars and seventy-three cents for you. So this is the foundation for all the billing from here on.
Okay. The Medicare part, I think we all understand.
Yeah.
So, so that leads into a question. So do we not balance bill? You know what I mean by balanced billing? So, so if-
By, by Medicare regulations, we have to balance bill. That's correct.
What about non-Medicare patients?
Non-Medicare patients, we balance bill. Whatever their insurance company doesn't pay, they get the, the rest.
So that, that's the part we wanna talk about.
Correct. So for instance, there's a house bill that was in session, a house bill, what, thirty-one, I believe it was. And what that, what one of our big problems is, is, for instance, Blue Shield, Blue Cross. When they sent an ambulance bill, they in turn write the checks to the individual that received the care. So this bill, this house bill thirty-one, what it was trying to get across is the insurance company should provide the name of the person that was treated, but also the name of the person that rendered the care, meaning Londonderry Fire. So now they can't go and cash that check without our endorsement, and that's what's happening. And that's, and that's a hard part of the process, you know? Somebody receives a check right before Christmas for eight hundred or a thousand dollars, and geez, do I wanna go out and buy Christmas presents for my kids or pay an ambulance bill? And that's what's happening. So it's, it's tough on our part, but that's what's happening.
I'm not sure that that's always happening because, as you know, I think I was all your calls for October.
Were you a customer?
Kept them working. And I had Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and I got the notice from the billing company, Coastal.
Yeah.
But I never got a check from Blue Cross, and I've never gotten an additional bill.
Did you have, are you Anthem?
No.
You're, that's why. Anthem is the Blue Cross, Blue Shield provider in New Hampshire that does that. If it's Blue Cross, Blue Shield out of state, or if it's in Mass, they pay directly.
Yeah, see, but I have Mass, and they sent me the check. Because, and I brought it down here and tried to give it to somebody, and nobody could figure out what to do with it.
And this is the problem, because it's, it's paid to you directly, you can't sign it over to us as, as part of it. This was the reason for House Bill thirty-one. We tried to get them to do what Massachusetts has been doing for a while. Certain Blue Cross, Blue Shield, depending on Cigna, there's a couple of different varieties of them. They, they will pay the, the, what we call it, wheels-up person. We, we, we took the wheels and they're up, and we get paid. However, Blue Cross, Blue Shield has decided that, since they don't wanna play in the same sandbox, they wanna charge us less than Medicare rates to be, belong to their provider group. So we, we said, we'll take the, the opportunity to, hopefully people will pay. And in some cases, that works out great. Other cases, it doesn't. And this is what we're running to more and more because they're not paying us. They've started keeping the checks. Or, and in a lot of cases, and I'll tell you from personal experience of having to collect these, that, John, you were very nice, and you, you brought the check and tried to, to, to give us the money. Some people never bothered to look at their statement, and the check is attached to the bottom of the statement. So if you're like a lot of people do, well, it's Blue Cross, Blue Shield, they paid it, I stick it in my file, I never look at it again. Or it's just a statement, it gets ripped up and thrown into the, into the trash. And I've had a couple of people actually come to me with the statement and the check attached to the bottom and say, what do I do with this? So it's all, all a problem.
My experience, I was, I get myself an ambulance ride in, for Labor Day. I wanted to beat Tom to the punch.
I beat him in numbers, though.
But I gotta tell you, that, you know, and I'm pretty much in the know. I mean, there aren't that many citizens that know more than we do about the process. I got, I got mail correspondence from Coastal. I thought it was junk mail.
Yeah, we, we, we run into that too, because you look at the, the window at the top, and it shows a Mass thing. And that's, we, we, we're trying to solve that problem with them now.
Yeah, you've gotta find a way to get Londonderry Fire Department all over those envelopes.
We met with them a week ago, Monday, or a week ago today, actually, to discuss exactly that, to see what was gonna streamline the process for us to be able to make their job easier, to make their collections higher, and that was actually-
Make it less confusing for you, too.
I gotta tell, I mean, I'm, I'm, I think I'm pretty normal. I hope, you know, I get a huge amount of junk mail. And I bring it in from the mailbox, and I stand in the garage next to the recycle bin, you know, trash, 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 trash.
And I-
And I take the one or two in the house that aren't junk mail, and I think Coastal's going in the trash.
Yeah, 'cause you see a Massachusetts address.
Right.
Yep, absolutely.
I, I don't have, it's not a bill.
Says Town of Londonderry, and then it says Nine Sutton, Mass.
It sounds like, it looks like a clever marketing scheme.
Yeah, unfortunately, this-
Something I don't want.
And this is, we brought that directly to them, and they're going to try and change that. Remember, they, this company bills for sixty or seventy entities. So they're, they're, the people that print their bills for them have done it this way to make it easier for them to receive it accordingly. We're trying to change that address window up, up at the tops, just to have your name on it.
How many, how many Coastal bills go out? And you probably can derive it by the number of calls you get, but-
On, on the average, we, we do about, I would say about a hundred and sixty billable calls per month. So we, we probably a hundred and sixty bills go out sometimes, sometimes more per month.
It doesn't feel like a lot to me. That, that almost feels like a part-time person in their basement doing a billing service. I mean, you know what I'm saying? That doesn't seem like it's a lot that-
It's, it's not so much the putting out of the bill, it's the chasing down of everything else.
I, I, I know they have a huge amount of clientele to serve.
Right.
But I guess what I'm, what I'm suggesting is, perhaps, given that rather, I think, rather small volume of billings, I think a hundred and sixty a month is not much. It's what, eight a day?
Five point three.
Okay, so I mean, it's, it's, it wouldn't be that unmanageable for a local provider to provide a local service with a, you know, at five percent, that's a, that's a pretty healthy fee.
Well, it's, it's, if it, if it's twenty-eight thousand dollars a year, if you can find somebody who wants to put up with all of the insurance regulations and all the coding and everything that goes with it, to make sure that we get as much money as possible, it's, it's not an easy task.
I, I guess I'm just-
And we have one person assigned to us from the billing service, and that, she does all of our, she has our, she has probably five accounts.
All I'm suggesting is, I, I would consider, I'll, I'll open the aperture up beyond just Coastal, then maybe other-
We, we put an RFP out for this last time. We went from Comstar at nine percent to Coastal at five percent. We had significant savings. We put the RFP out for anybody who does it. There are very many mom-and-pop local billing services. They're from across the country if, if someone-
There are, but there are a lot of local dentists and doctors in town that use local billing services. And, and they're probably not called billing services. They're prob, they're probably the mom-and-pop type of folks. I'm not being directive here. Please don't miss an interpret. I'm just saying, let's, let's open the aperture up just to see if there are other options that, that might give us a more personalized local service within the parameters of the thirty-five K line item here. I, I don't, I may be all wet, but I'm just, just throwing it out there.
Okay. Hold. Fred?
If, if I can skip ahead here, one of the things that we did is we sat down with the finance department, and we looked at what our comparable rates are and what our collection percentages were. And we sat down and we agreed that in six months from now, we are gonna look at what we charge, what our collection rate is, and how to get that collection rate up higher. Part of the, part of the business here is what we charge. So if you look at Hooks, it, Hooks it charges just barely over Medicare at five percent. To an extreme with Merrimack, they're at fifty percent. If we go to the next slide, we look at our collection rates. The collection rates, don't, don't look at these as bad. The collection rates settle after two or three years. So at eighty, at eighty-nine percent for two thousand nine, all those bills have been collected. We got all the money for that. We're still collecting money for two thousand eleven. We're still collecting a lot of money for two thousand twelve. Some of the insurance companies haven't even received the bills for two thousand twelve. So these numbers, we're hoping, will be back up around the eighty-two, eighty-three to eighty-nine percent rate. It, it changes. We can get a bill tomorrow, or somebody paying tomorrow for two thousand ten, and that rate will go from eighty-three percent, maybe to eighty-four percent.
So Fred, you know, when we did the dispatch committee, we were over in the fire station, and the, the fire chief over there touted the fact that he was getting ninety-five percent collection. And I drilled him pretty hard from the standpoint of like, you know, asking him what he was doing and everything else. Okay, so was he, was he-
If I can skip ahead-
Is he, is he using the same numbers you are? I mean, I, I'm just looking for a way to help, you know?
It, it's, it, and, and we asked our billing company this, and she's, she said, and point-blank, if they're collecting ninety-five percent of every ambulance bill that they put out there, their numbers are significantly higher than the whole entire country.
Okay, so does George like have like a magic sauce or something?
If you're, if you're saying what they, if he's collecting ninety-five percent of the collectibles, then that's probably true. If we took just our collectibles, we are pretty close.
Just Fred.
So that meeting with the finance director, we also heard the same numbers. And we're gonna meet Darren, myself, Sue, Sue Hickey, and Doug are gonna, not you, Doug, I'm Doug. I don't know Doug Finance guy's name.
Smith, Smith.
Are gonna meet with Jerry to see how they get to that rate.
Okay.
And to be honest, it may be not cost-effective for us to get to that rate. If it costs us thirty thousand dollars to make another ten thousand dollars, it may be saying, hey, that five percent's not worth going after. We don't know yet, but we're gonna look at that probably within the next two months. And like I said, there should be some kind of proposal within the next six months of going out for a bid for another company, doing something internally differently, drastically differently.
Might I suggest-
Yes.
That you consider an audit, a blind audit of Coastal. And pick a sample of folks you give a ride to, and you, you wanna see their billing documentation when it, when it finally gets to their house. Get people to volunteer to allow you to do that. I can tell you, the quality of the documentation coming out of Coastal was so bad that the boilerplate section of it was almost unreadable. It had been Xeroxed so many times that it was not only all blurry and, and, and it looked like parchment, like something of the Declaration of Independence. It was very, it was very unreadable, and it was, it was, it was skewed on the copy machine. It was just a qua, it was the quality, that five, you're not getting the five, you're not getting your money's worth with that five percent. It's just, I brought it in to show these guys a few months ago, and it, I was, I was surprised. And then I said, holy smokes, I'm the one sending these bills out, figuratively. And it, I would, but I, but I'm only a sample of one. Maybe they, maybe they had a bad day. So what I would suggest is-
No, no, it's the same. I got you.
So, so what I would suggest is do an audit.
I see, Fred.
To think about, think about a way to do a quality control audit of, of looking at real people in Londonderry getting real documentation from Coastal. And you make your own judgment of, of whether you're satisfied with what, what-
And I think that's why we met with them last Monday. I mean, with the chief leaving, I wanted to get a handle on what- I mean, with the chief leaving, I wanted to get a handle on what, who they were, uh, what they were all about, what we could do to make the process better. And, and we had, we've sat down with finance and discussed with finance, you know, whether at some point in time if we're gonna look at other entities, um, you know, hearing the different collection rates from the area communities, who they're dealing with, you know?
What, what, what they, what I don't think they get, and I'm making a judgment here, is they don't understand that they're an extension of us.
Correct.
And they play that role. And that we, we need to practice some customer affinity here. And I, I'm a firm believer that people, that people will pay at a higher rate if they're not confused, and they understand what they get, and it does, 'cause when they get confused, they get, they get angry.
Irritated, yeah, absolutely.
And, and, you know, that, they're gonna, you're gonna lose two, three, four, five percent of people, say, "To hell with it," and throw, throw the thing away. You know, "Come get me." I mean, they'll take that attitude. So I, I think if we practice some customer, if we get our provider, I don't wanna pick on Coastal, I don't, I've never met any of the folks, they may be wonderful people. But whoever our provider is, they've got to understand that they are an ex, you know, they're, they're wearing the badge you have on your sleeve as well.
Absolutely.
As an extension of us. And they just, we just happen to contract that service out, 'cause we think it's cheaper than doing it in-house. So if, if they don't understand that, they, they don't understand that our citizens are our customers, and our collection rate is probably very de, somewhat dependent on, on how we achieve a customer affinity with, with those customers.
Agreed.
Uh, then, you know, maybe we oughta consider, you know, alternate providers.
Is, is Dairy, do you happen to know who collects for Dairy? I mean, are they paying nine percent to collect eighty-two percent versus our five percent to collect seventy-one?
I don't know who exactly, it, it's a company out of the Midwest. Like I said, we're gonna meet with their finance department, our finance department and ourselves, to see if we can figure out, if they can explain to us how they got to that point, and whether it's cost-effective for us to get to that point, or just even increasing some of those small little things, like Council Dolan said, to make it a better package, a better presentation, and a better collection rate. So we should be doing that, we're hoping within the next two months before budgets get crazy.
We're, we're great at beating a thing to death, so let's go to the rates.
So, back to the, we're back to the rates.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna try to get you home early.
Okay.
So show us rates.
All right, back one.
Numbers.
So this here is showing you that it, um, since two thousand nine, our rates have not changed. So we're currently at or around thirty percent over Medicare. And we have not changed that rate since two thousand nine. And that was the transition between, two thousand eight and two thousand nine was the transition between Comstar and the current billing company that we're with now.
All right, so our hard rates haven't changed since two thousand and nine.
Correct.
How much have our costs gone up?
Costs to provide the service?
How much have our costs gone up? Five percent, ten percent?
Probably about five percent, yeah, at least. Well, if you don't count the last, you know, count all the retirements and everything else, you're probably, probably closer to ten.
Okay, gentlemen, all we wanna do is break even here. Do we want the fire department to look into raising the rates?
But are they saying that they can't get any more because of Medicare?
Oh, no. The Medicare's not gonna pay us anymore.
No, blue cross, blue shield, Mike.
Blue cross, blue shield, Mike. This is why, I'll, you also see that where we talk about our rate, we have BLS, ALS-1, ALS-2, and then we have the menu, we call it, underneath, um, which is provided to other insurance companies that pay those menu items. ALS-1, ALS-2, and BLS are all the package deal for, for Medicare primarily.
Yeah, so the more that's going on, the more you pay, with you individually, not meaning you individually.
So again, this slide here is showing all the towns at the Medicare rate and what they are above at this point in time. Where we fall sort of right in the middle.
So my question to the council is, is that, you know, if it costs us five, seven, eight percent more to provide the service, I'm not looking to make a big moneymaker here, but we should continue to at least, you know, cover our costs.
So, so what is our total revenue? Was there, yeah, on the slide?
Total revenue so far this year is?
No, in, in, in a typical year.
There you go.
Right, right there.
That's what's collected. What do we bill?
We bill close to-
Twenty percent more than that?
Twenty percent more than that, yes.
So, but we are, our costs are, I think, three, around three-twenty, right?
Three-twenty-two.
Three-twenty-two.
So, so we're, we're both costs.
All I'm saying is, is that, you know, we're above costs, but our costs are ten percent higher than they were three years ago, and we haven't raised our rates.
I disagree, I'm just, when you say break even, we're, we're-
I'm, I'm not saying break even, I'm saying cover our costs at a consistent rate. In other words, what I'm saying is, if it, if it, if it costs us three-twenty, and it used to cost us two-eighty, we gotta make up that forty grand, 'cause we're taking that forty grand from someplace else and providing the same service. We shouldn't be taking it from someplace else to supplement the ambulance service. We should be running consistent. That's what I'm saying.
Right.
If you guys think that makes sense.
To a certain extent, it does, but every, again, if you increase the cost, you will also have to increase the number of people that you won't pay and write off, or the ones that, for instance, Medicare, we, we still gotta balance bill. It's gonna cost those people, they're gonna see 'em more on their end.
I understand.
Okay, just, as long as you're aware of that.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just bringing it up.
So the-
And I'm not saying to increase the Medicare people. I mean, I mean, I mean, maybe we have to do a broad brush, I don't know. But all I'm saying is, is I'm not looking, the people who are on a fixed income, I'm not looking to increase them, much like we just did for the seniors. We're, we're looking to help our seniors. But the forty thousand dollars, you pay somehow, so instead of the people using the service paying for it, who may be living in Londonderry and not living in Londonderry, the taxpayer pays for it. That's all I'm saying.
Right, but, but you're right, since, if you go back to that slide on the rates, the, they've been flat since oh nine, I think.
Yes.
See, I, I think we would be wise to try to index them to our cost line, so that we don't go four, five years with a, a flat rates, that we, if our cost is going up one or two percent a year, that our rates ought to, ought to map to that.
I don't disagree.
So I, whatever we do this year, I would think, I would hope that we could ask future councils to think about, or maybe we ask the fire department to come to us with an indexing scheme each year to say, you know, "You asked us to come back, and our costs have gone up point nine percent in two thousand fourteen, so we're gonna suggest that we change the rates up for-"
We, we, you could do like we do for this, uh, making our rates. We, we, we're our Medicare plus thirty percent. You could add to that, saying that the budgetary cost increases two percent, you add that to the top end of that at that point. In other words, you raise the rate accordingly, percentage-wise, above Medicare by the rate of budgetary increase.
Yeah, look, I'm a simple-minded guy, okay? All I wanna make sure is, is if you're forty thousand dollars short, and you need to buy a piece of equipment that saves somebody's life, you have the money to buy that piece of equipment and put it on that ambulance and provide that service. That's just my simple argument.
But you could tie that to the same way we tie the Medicare plus thirty as our billing rate.
Well, well, that also, i- if you true out the cost, then you know what your ambulance service is costing you. And regardless of whether we collect it or not, we at least know it's a management tool.
Are we thinking of raising the rates tonight on, at a notional-
Last slide, Fred.
Recommendation of five percent? Oh, you, you got another slide, I, I'll hold that.
No, last, that was the last one, actually, topic of consideration.
I mean, you know, I, I, I don't think, I think this council's been smart not to just react.
Right.
So I think what we need to do is, we need to ask the fire department, "Okay, we've given you some feedback, you know, what do you guys think? And, you know, talk to, if you need to talk to other towns, or whatever else you need to do, let's talk about it and see if that makes sense."
Well, I think it's, I think it's, for us, one, feedback from you also. I mean, this is, this is where we've been since two thousand nine, thirty percent above Medicare. You know, is it direction from you folks wanting to, if we wanna collect more revenue, do we wanna increase that percentage rate? I'd say, yeah, it could be time. If so, to what percentage rate? And that's something that we can, we can evaluate through other communities and figure out where we wanna be.
If you go back to two thousand nine-
Yeah.
Track your costs, two thousand nine to present, and come back and recommend to us, whether it's five percent or four point three, or-
Or two percent, or whatever it is.
Yeah.
And, and then, Chief, in, in the future, I, we would ask the town, I think, the fire department, to come, you take the initiative each year to say-
This is what's going on.
Here's what we last year, here's what our costs have done, done this year, we're gonna increase the, we might say no, but at least, let's not wait until someone says, gee, let's go look at our rates again, let's just-
Gee, let's not wait, now, now it costs us forty thousand dollars more. I don't know if that's the right number, but I'm guessing.
Right, the, the other thing, if I may, one last point. My, my rant earlier about the billing company. You guys provide, I mean, I've, I've gotten two rides, uh, over the past decade.
Beat him.
The service is fantastic. You guys do a fantastic job.
Thank you.
And if I were you, I'd be angry, that you, you do, you, you work so hard to do such a perfect job, and then on the back end, you get somebody making you look bad, because you know, who knows where those bills are coming from? I mean, I'm a town council, I didn't know where they came from. I mean, and that's, that oughta make you, make you guys wanna strangle someone. But, you know, because they've got to be considered an extension of us. So that's, don't misunderstand my point. You guys are doing a great job, it's just, it's frustrating to see, if you average in what the billing company is doing, it takes, it takes us all down.
All level down.
Down to a-
I understand.
'Cause, 'cause that, once the ride's over, people are left, their last impression, you know, they cross the finish line, it's a, it's a lousy set of documentation, and that's their lasting impression of their ambulance ride.
And unfortunately, because the insurance companies have changed their program, before you would've never seen any paperwork at all. Now you do. And that's probably why we never bothered to even consider looking at it, because you, you don't get anything, you never used to get anything until the insurance companies have changed the way they, they direct the bills and so forth. You know, and before, we would've known, the bill would've been sent to the insurance company, insurance company writes the town a check, and we'd never see it. We see the check, that's all we see, you know? Now you're seeing the bills that we don't normally see. The only ones that used to get bills were self-payers and those people who, uh, didn't have insurance, so.
Any other questions for the fire department?
Fire department, any other questions for the council?
No, uh, last thing I just wanted to mention is, I know in a previous council meeting back months ago, is that the discussion on collections, um, basically hard collections, where do we wanna go with this? You know, we, the billing company that we have right now, they bill out to a hundred and eighty days. At that point of a hundred and eighty days, it needs to go to finance. My recommendation would be to have some sort of a committee, including, you know, whether it's the finance director, one of you folks, somebody from the fire department, to look over these bills to claim hardship. So who am I to judge whether this person can pay his bill or not? But I think with a committee of people, they can say, okay, this is, this is something that they can be written off of, they can't be written off. But if they can't be written off, where do we wanna go with the collection part, part of it? You know, there was talk about hard collection, you know, whether we're gonna hire out a outside agency for a collection agency, or something like that, in which case, the chief has looked into that, you know, they collect on, what's collected anywhere from thirty to fifty percent. Do we wanna go that avenue? I have mixed feelings.
We can follow up on that.
Okay, so, the follow-up with the chief.
Okay.
The other chief. Not, not you chiefs. Um, okay, anything else? You guys good?
Yes.
Everybody here good? Thank you, Joe. All right.
Since this is probably my last council meeting, uh, I'm passing the baton. He has it.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We could have a special meeting if you want. Yeah, I'm assuming the school deliberative session is over, if you guys are here. Darn, we didn't make it. I mean, my first meeting, that's gone past nine o'clock. Whose fault is that? Mine, right now.
Yours.
Okay, gentlemen, next, uh, next couple of items, and let's wrap this up. Um, ordinance twenty thirteen oh one, amendment to the zoning ordinance relating to rezoning map six, lot thirty-seven and thirty-eight, Mohawk Drive, to be read this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt, uh, the first reading of ordinance twenty thirteen oh one. Suspend the reading, hold a second reading and public hearing on March fourth, two thousand thirteen.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Post chair votes affirmative, five zero. Uh, next item, order twenty thirteen oh five, expenditure maintenance, expenditure of maintenance trust funds for various projects. Reading tonight, adoption tonight. Do I have a volunteer? You gonna make me read it?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt order twenty thirteen dash oh five. Reading is tonight, uh, and we will not have a second hearing and no public meeting, and we will adopt it tonight if so voted. Whereas the voters since two thousand three have approved funding for the maintenance and repair of public buildings and grounds in the town, and whereas by the town council, the town of Londonderry, the town treasurer is hereby ordered to expend ten thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-six cents from the expendable maintenance trust fund for the aforementioned repairs and improvements. Now therefore be it ordered by the town council, the town of Londonderry, the town treasurer is hereby ordered to expend that sum.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, chair votes affirmative, five zero. Next item, resolution relative to the readdressing properties of Highlander Way. I seem to be, I have to try to find this one. It's on the online at the moment. All right, you got it? Is it, um, just reading tonight?
It's, it's a public hearing next meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the first reading of resolution twenty thirteen dash oh one, which is a resolution relative to the readdressing of properties on Highlander Way. Recommend that we waive the first reading tonight. We conduct a second reading and a public hearing on March fourth, two thousand thirteen.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, chair votes affirmative, five zero. Order twenty thirteen oh six, resolution relative to suspending a transportation impact fee program for Route twenty-eight and Route one oh two. Bill.
Uh, the-
Just a synopsis.
The planning board on February sixth, last Wednesday night, after hearing from staff, recommended that we suspend the transportation impact fee program for parts of Route twenty-eight and Route one oh two. Uh, I don't have to belabor the concerns we've had over the last, um, several months regarding impact fees. As we began to take a look at the methodology of the impact fee program vis-à-vis transportation, it became clear that, uh, we needed to really take a very hard, drilled-down look at this, and we felt that suspension of the, uh, collection right now, effective immediately, would be the most prudent task. We brought that forward to the planning board. Uh, the planning board, after careful consideration, recommended same, and it is now to the council.
Mr. Chairman, given that excellent, in detail explanation, I would, uh, make a motion that we adopt order twenty thirteen dash zero six, suspend the reading, and adopt the order this evening.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion?
Just a quick one, um, the planning board asked, um, if there's any idea of how long it would take, um, to have that process, for us to render a decision on the suspension as far as how long it would be.
The suspension itself?
Yeah.
Uh, honestly, I don't know.
Okay.
I thi, I think the audit that is being currently conducted will give us some guidance going forward, but even after that, I, I don't know.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post chair votes affirmative, five zero. Uh, approval of council, town council minutes as presented in our packet for January twenty-first, two thousand thirteen. I'll entertain a motion.
I guess.
Motion to approve the minutes as drafted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post chair votes affirmative. Liaison reports. Anybody have anything new since we got together last, which was only last Monday? Nothing new?
No.
Town manager, we took care of that one or anything? The town manager, you have anything else?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Uh, anyone for boarding committee? Gentlemen, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.